The success of TSMC is not just of importance here locally, it's nationally. They are making semiconductors that are fueling the future of our military and our military advancement. It is a national security issue that we be successful here in Arizona with what we're doing on semiconductor. Those are secure supply chain in the most important industry for advanced technology as well as military advancement in technology as well. So this is of national importance and it's important that Arizona have its fair share of that supply. And I think that what you described, that plan of kind of sharing, we don't want to do more than our fair share. We want to make sure we get our fair share based on the reality of the growth and both growth in people and economic development. We can't be forced upon policies that were based on decades and decades ago when it was a much, much different situation here in terms of population and economic development.
Forty million Americans depend on the Colorado River. We have to get a deal that works. It's essential to Phoenix and our future. We want to be creative. Arizona did not cause global climate change by ourselves. The drought is hitting so many communities. So we need to make sure we think intelligently about climate change and what will be the overall supply and then allocate fairly. I can't help myself, I do want to push for, the Bureau of Reclamation needs good funding. We need to have scientists, we need to have attorneys who understand the complex law of the river. We need to have the best data and thinkers at the table so that we can get a deal done that makes sense for all of the stakeholders and ensures the continued success of the many states and Mexico who depends so much on Colorado.
The Broadway Curve Project is in the works. Prepare for lane closures and detours. Stay ahead of the curve at I-10BroadwayCurve.com.
City of Phoenix is a great place to work because of the people you work with. I love the people I work with and I get to talk to them every day and they keep me entertained.
I love working for Phoenix Public Works because of my amazing coworkers and I grew up in this community as well and I like taking care of it.
I love it. It's like being a kid, being a Tonka kid, like Tonka trap.
Welcome to Cave Creek. Thank you to everyone for being here today. I'm Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego. I hope you are not crushed that we are indoors. We have some exciting news that the former mayor of Phoenix, now our distinguished congressman, Greg Stanton and I announced last month. After years of work by an enormous group of people, many of whom are in this room, we were able to secure $179 million investment in our water security. Thank you so much to Congressman Stanton and the federal government for this partnership. This goes a long way towards making sure we continue our strong record of water security. I am so thankful to be here with Vice Mayor Ann O'Brien, the incredible City of Phoenix Water Service Team, our industry partners, Dr. David White of Arizona State University and City Leadership. We are joined by our Assistant City Manager Lori Bays, Ginger Spencer, our Deputy City Manager who oversees water services. For their hard work on this, I want to specifically thank Troy Hayes, our outgoing Water Services Department Director. Troy, thank you so much for your leadership. Dr. Max Wilson, our Water Resources Manager. Their teams put in tireless efforts, countless meetings with the Bureau of Reclamation. It was truly a team effort. I'm not sure if I've ever had a single grant where I have had more meetings, but it was worth it. Troy is about to retire from the City of Phoenix and so we are thrilled to have $179 million going away present from Troy. We have a few directors who are going to be retiring soon and we hope this becomes a tradition at the City of Phoenix. I want to thank Congressman Stanton so much. He's been a longtime advocate and policy leader on water issues. I found out that we received this grant when I was in Washington DC and came to visit his office. So that was, that's a lovely way to welcome.
The timing worked out great.
Yes, if every time I visited Washington DC, there was $179 million of good news, I think I could go more often. The money will be used to design and build the North Gateway Advanced Water Purification Facility, a crucial water recycling project to ensure we're getting the most out of every drop. The facility will be constructed in the northwestern part of the city, the Vice Mayor's district, a burgeoning area for families and critical industries, including our semiconductor industry. Once in operation, it will augment our water supply with nearly 7 million gallons of clean purified water a day. When you arrived here today, you saw the significant construction project just outside of this room. This site will be our first advanced water purification facility in operation by 2028. The two sites combined will provide 14,000 acre feet of potable water, enough to serve 40,000 families. We're so thankful to our partners at this site. Sunt is leading on construction and Black and Beach on design and doing a great job for us. The two facilities will relieve pressure on the strained Colorado River. It's also an investment in Phoenix families and the future of our economy. The new state-of-the-art water purification facility will help us reduce the cost of getting water to Phoenix residents. Today, Arizona State University is having an important conference on water and housing and we are so pleased to deliver good news on this. With this influx of federal dollars, you'll see a reduction in impact fees for new development. Today's $179 million announcement will make housing more affordable for Phoenix residents. This work isn't limited to the north part of our city. You heard me talk before about the Advanced Water Purification Facility at 91st Avenue in Levine. That's a wonderful cooperative facility with multiple cities who are partnering with us. Near the turn of the decade, our regional 91st Avenue Facility will deliver around 60 million gallons of purified water per day to Phoenix Metro. That's enough for 200,000 households. Phoenix understands that we're in a drought and we take very seriously our role in making sure we are well-prepared and that we have the water resources the West depends on. Our residents want to be part of the solution and they've been getting the job done. We've created a culture of conservation. We achieved our 2030 conservation goal five years ahead of schedule. Whether we're leaving water in Lake Mead to support the health of the reservoir, investing in the forest health ecosystem, or developing high-tech facilities for the benefit of the valley, Phoenix is proud to support regional water security solutions. Our city got its name from the mythical bird that rose from the ashes of canal infrastructure built by our Native American communities who came before us. Water infrastructure is in our DNA in Phoenix by necessity and it's ingrained in our culture and our heritage. It will take an all sectors approach to rebalance the Colorado system and I'm proud that Phoenix is stepping up to meet that moment. We're lucky to have great partners here, including tribal communities, business and agriculture leaders, and residents who want to be part of the solution. Today's announcement means that we can really invest in our supply, have more options, and it's great news. Arizona does nationally important work with our water, whether it's providing winter vegetables to so much of our country or the most advanced of microchips. We're so pleased that the federal government recognizes our importance and is a great partner here. There's national and global attention for the West on our water challenges and Phoenix is an example of successful water stewardship. I'm more grateful than ever to have many outstanding water champions in our community and our region. This project has been very bipartisan and got wide support. I want to thank members of our delegation who are not here who advocated for first the money to be allocated and then the money to be set aside and then allocated. And it was very much bipartisan, including Congresswoman of the, at the time Debbie Lesko, who read, advocated for this project. Housing advocates were very helpful and pushed for this as well, including the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. We're going to have a lot of fun with this project as well. Whether it be beer and video games, we're doing some cool education. Scottsdale has led the way in this, producing advanced water purification technology for now about a decade. They did a great project where they took that water and gave it to our brewers who came up with Wonderful Brew. I feel like the Phoenix breweries did a little bit better than the Scottsdale breweries. But either way, it really showed this is great tasting water and people understand. Our brewers know a lot about water taste and they did a great job and appreciated the product that this technology with the most advanced tech produces. Arizona State University is also having a lot of fun with us. They've helped give out popsicles as part of educational efforts and they have a wonderful video game where you can actually put yourself in the water system and see how this technology works. I'm the mother of an eight-year-old, so anything that involves video games, I feel like has a lot of support in our household. So again, we're really excited about what this means for our community. This is good news for our entire country and we're so thankful to our partners in Washington DC for this investment. Congressman Stanton, since your days on the Phoenix City Council and as mayor, you've been passionate and understood water policy is crucial to the success of Arizona. We're so thankful for your advocacy for this grant and I'm pleased to introduce you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, very much. Look, this city has the right leadership at the right time on the most important issue facing the future of our state and that's the issue of water and water conservation during this time of drought. The mayor mentioned the incredible city staff that is here in the most innovative department of all, which is the Water Department. Please don't realize the incredible innovation, strategic thinking and planning. The Vice Mayor is behind me. She's been such a strong advocate, providing her leadership and bipartisan support for this important project. So Vice Mayor, thank you for your passionate advocacy. And this mayor, this mayor is the right leader at the right time of this city. Her experience with environmental stewardship and leadership from her private life brought that to City Hall. And of course, she has been so, such a passionate advocate on this particular issue, so it's my honor to partner with her. And she was recognized recently for a national award for her water stewardship, much well-deserved. No better partner on the issue of water. The historic mega drought that we are experiencing is the most significant challenge we face as a state. It's the number one potential threat to our economic development, to the world-class economy that we are building right here before our very eyes in Phoenix, in the region and the state of Arizona. From personal experience, when cities are courting investors or businesses, one of the questions they ask, will we have enough water? The answer has been and always must be a resounding yes. Take Phoenix's advanced manufacturing sector. We're not far from TSMC, which the mayor led the way on bringing the largest foreign direct investment in the country right here to Phoenix, over $100 billion semiconductor manufacturing facility and the businesses that have sprung up around it. The answer has always got to be yes to access to great water. Cities have a responsibility to provide our booming population with clean and reliable water supply and that means getting the most out of every drop. Water policy in Phoenix and in Arizona is never abstract or theoretical. It is the best potential limiting factor to our success here in the desert. The simple truth is this, Arizona is going to have to fight to protect access to Colorado River water through negotiations and at the same time, we have to do more with less. We have a responsibility to constantly innovate, to look for bold, ambitious ways to use less water. The most effective tools we have are water recycling and water conservation. Advanced water purification is a proven solution and we're going to take it to scale, big-time scale here in our community. Now Mayor Gallego has built collaborative partnerships, including with water-minded leaders on the city council, like our Vice Mayor Ann O'Brien behind me, and shouldered large costs to make this project a reality. But cities can't go it alone. It takes a true whole of government approach to drought-proof our communities. And I am proud to represent the Congress here as your partner because Congress works best working with our cities, working together as partners. That's why I've worked so hard to get dollars from the two landmark water infrastructure laws, the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act, get that money out the door into Arizona communities quickly. And I've said again and again, the federal government needs to prioritize these dollars for innovative, system-wide conservation, not just paying users to leave water in the system to prevent short-term collapse. We need to think long-term conservation. Funding for this project comes from the Inflation Reduction Act's System Conservation and Efficiency Program and that's exactly the kind of smart, forward-looking investment that the law was meant to support what's being done right here, right now. And we're not resting on our laurels today. I'm ready to work alongside the mayor and other leaders in our region to move the 91st Avenue Facility, the third advanced water purification plant that will serve several valley cities. I'm ready to move it forward. These aren't necessarily the most splashy, sexy projects. They're just good, sound water management that will pay dividends for Phoenix and the state as a whole. And we still have work to do. Ultimately, it's going to take big, bold action by the federal government to protect the long-term health of the Colorado River. But this facility, this investment, what the city is doing with these federal dollars brings us so much closer to a more sustainable, secure and resilient water future. And with that, I think the Vice Mayor is next. We are in her hood, if you will, her neighborhood. And her advocacy, both with Congress and with the administration, were critical to make this happen. The Vice Mayor, Ann O'Brien.
Thank you, Congressman. Good morning. This funding marks a transformative victory for Phoenix and I'm proud to say it's personal for me and the residents I represent in District One. When the city first received preliminary approval for federal funding, I was thrilled and then I watched anxiously as months passed without final word. I knew I had to act, so I traveled to the White House to express my concerns directly about potential federal cuts to critical city projects, particularly the North Gateway Advanced Water Purification Facility. I'm grateful to, that Christine Glassner, the Deputy Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, understood the urgency and importance of this federal partnership in helping alleviate pressure on the overdrawn Colorado River. This $179 million investment represents exactly the kind of proactive leadership Phoenix needs. And I want to acknowledge the tremendous work of our Mayor Kate Gallego, a longtime advocate of sustainability. The mayor also traveled to Washington DC to fight for our fair share of federal funding multiple times. And I also want to thank Congressman Stanton for championing our project with the Bureau of Reclamation and understanding the technology firsthand by touring our Cave Creek Facility. The timing of this funding couldn't be more critical. North Phoenix is experiencing remarkable growth anchored by TSMC's massive semiconductor investment and the dozens of businesses that are following. None of this growth is possible without reliable, sustainable water infrastructure. We're turning what was once waste into our most precious resource. When it goes online, the North Gateway Facility will produce nearly 7 million gallons of purified drinking water each day. That's enough to serve about 20,000 to 25,000 households. This is the kind of innovative thinking that attracts high-tech industries and the skilled workforce that drives 21st century economic growth. It's the kind of innovation that builds resilience for our children and grandchildren. And I can't wait to drink the first glass of clean, unpurified water from North Phoenix. It will taste like innovation, sustainability and Phoenix's bright future. I'd also like to thank all of our city staff and especially Troy Hayes as he is exiting. I think you set the bar pretty high for your fellow directors, so they might not be too happy with you, $179 million grant on your way out. And now I'd like to introduce David White with ASU's Global Institute of Sustainability and Innovation.
Thank you. I'm honored to join Representative Stanton, Mayor Gallego, the Vice Mayor, and all of our partners in celebrating this major step forward for water security in our region. This $179 million federal investment in the North Gateway Advanced Water Purification Facility reflects this strong commitment to securing our long-term water future. The facility will use proven, advanced technologies to create a reliable, safe and affordable source of drinking water for the region. And I'd like to say, as the Chair of Phoenix's Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee, I was first appointed to this position by Representative Stanton when he was the mayor of City of Phoenix and then reappointed by Mayor Gallego. And I've had the pleasure of working with this department under multiple directors, including Director Troy Hayes. And congratulations to Troy on retirement and congratulations to Brandy Kelso on coming in as our incoming director. And I will say, in that time, I observed a department that is incredibly forward-looking, innovative. Every, every challenge that we've faced in this region, whether it is resilience to Colorado River water shortages, whether it's infrastructure investments, whether it's public-private partnerships, municipal partnerships, and now advanced water purification, the City of Phoenix has been at the leading edge nationally in water resource management. And water security is foundational to our public health, our environmental quality and our economic development. Phoenix continues to grow and ensuring access to this drought-resilient water supply is essential to supporting jobs, attracting businesses and sustaining our quality of life. And at Arizona State University, we're proud to partner with the federal government, the City of Phoenix, state of Arizona, and our many partners, including our private and commercial partners. Our faculty and students are contributing to the science, the engineering and the social dimensions of water reuse. And in particular, we recognize that public understanding and public acceptance of advanced water purification is critical to the success. So building trust through transparency, through education is as important as the technology itself. And as Mayor Gallego mentioned, one of our projects is developing a virtual reality program that allows people to tour advanced water purification facilities, shrink themselves down to the size of a water molecule and follow themselves through the purification process. And Mayor Gallego had a chance to, to experience this, as did much of our Water Services Department. It's just one example of the work we're doing at the university to try to drive forward innovation. So universities, local governments, federal governments, private industry and communities, when we work together, we can develop and deliver solutions that are both innovative and practical. And the water tastes like innovation. I'm going to, I think you trademarked that. I'm going to use that line. I love it. So thank you to Representative Stanton, Mayor Gallego for your leadership and for your commitment to a sustainable water future. And we look forward to supporting you in this continued work. And I think the mayor is going to take questions to start.
The North Gateway Advanced Water Purification Facility, once the water is treated, where will it go? Will it be hooked up to homes or pumped into the canal system?
So we hope that it will be ready in 2030 and go and serve our community. Did you want, should, we, you want to?
Where's the water going?
My name is Nazario Prieto. Good morning, everybody. We're very excited to be here. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I'm the Assistant Director of the Wastewater Utility and just really excited to be able to, to be here today and to be able to continue the pure water plan that Phoenix has. In terms of where this water will go, at this point in time, we haven't, we haven't fully designed it yet. We haven't gotten there yet. But one of the thoughts is that it will go to our customers. It could happen, they go directly to our customers. It could happen that we send it to recharge basins. So we're still kind of looking into that, but the thought is that over time, it will provide additional water resources to our potable water customers.
Just a follow-up about the filtration process a little bit. Can you explain how it's similar or different from reverse osmosis? I imagine it goes through RO and a couple of other stuff?
So as I, as I mentioned, we haven't designed it yet, but if I can talk a little bit about Cave Creek and what we do here, one thing that you have to remember is we've been treating wastewater for decades. The industry knows how to do that. We're required to treat it to a certain level before we can put it to beneficial use, before we put it to the environment. So when we talk about advanced water treatment, we're taking that highly-treated recycled water, running it through additional treatment processes. Here at this plant, what we're doing is we're running it through a series of treatment barriers to clean the water even further. So it will have reverse osmosis here, also have MBR technology, which is membrane bioreactors, biological nutrient removal, and then we'll have ultraviolet advanced oxidation process with granular activated carbon contactors as well. So it's, we call it advanced water purification. In reality, they're proven technologies that have been used at treatment plants for many years. A lot of them, they're just not put in series like we're putting them here. So they, it's just going to be, the water's going to be the cleanest water that we'll be providing in Phoenix.
And can you speak to the finances of the project at all, like how the cost of the recycled purified water will compare to the cost of just fresh pollution?
It's a great question. It, we all, you know, we can't sugarcoat it. It's going to be more expensive, but one of the things that we have to consider is how expensive is not having water? What is the cost of not having water? So what this is going to do, it provides another water resource. But even looking at potential cost on the Colorado River, downriver, we've had people tell us that that cost is going up and up and up every single year. So when you start looking at the cost of advanced water treatment, it's actually very cost-effective.
And then the question for you, like, is this was a question with, let me, when were any issues drawn down, like, um, were they ever questioned as part of the, the discretions, sort of shuffle and pumping freeze, et cetera, with the IRA?
Yes, and that's because all projects were, as you know, every single project that was in the pipeline was paused as they reviewed them for the various things that the administration wanted to review them in. Obviously, this project was from the, from the areas that the administration was looking at projects and whether they wanted to stop them completely or not. I disagree with that, but that, that wasn't relevant to this project. You know, this project doesn't check any of those boxes. This was a
Our faculty and students are contributing to the science, the engineering, and the social dimensions of water reuse. And in particular, we recognize that public understanding and public acceptance of advanced water purification is critical to the success. So building trust through transparency, through education, is as important as the technology itself. And as Mayor Gallego mentioned, one of our projects is developing a virtual reality program that allows people to tour advanced water purification facilities, shrink themselves down to the size of a water molecule, and follow themselves through the purification process. And Mayor Gallego had a chance to experience this, as did much of our Water Services Department. It's just one example of the work we're doing at the university to try to drive forward innovation. So universities, local governments, federal governments, private industry, and communities, when we work together, we can develop and deliver solutions that are both innovative and practical. And the water tastes like innovation. I'm gonna, I think you trademarked that. I'm gonna use that line. I love it. So thank you to Representative Stanton, Mayor Gallego, for your leadership and for your commitment to a sustainable water future. And we look forward to supporting you in this continued work. And I think the mayor is going to take questions to start.
The North Gateway Advanced Water Purification Facility, once the water is treated, where will it go? Will it be hooked up to homes or pumping to the canal system?
So we hope that it will be ready in 2030 and go and serve our community. Do you want, should, we, you wanna?
Where's the water going?
My name is Nosario Prieto. Good morning, everybody. We're very excited to be here. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I'm the Assistant Director of the Wastewater Utility and just really excited to be able to be here today and to be able to continue the pure water plan that Phoenix has. In terms of where this water will go, at this point in time, we haven't, we haven't fully designed it yet. We haven't gotten there yet. But one of the thoughts is that it will go to our customers. It could happen, they go directly to our customers. It could happen that we send it to recharge basins. So we're still kind of looking into that, but the thought is that over time, it will provide additional water resources to our portable water customers.
Just a follow-up about the filtration process a little bit. Can you explain how it's similar or different from reverse osmosis? I imagine it goes through RO and a couple of other stuff?
So as I, as I mentioned, we haven't designed it yet, but if I can talk a little bit about Cave Creek and what we do here, one thing that you have to remember is we've been treating wastewater for decades. The industry knows how to do that. We're required to treat it to a certain level before we can put it to beneficial use, before we put it to the environment. So when we talk about advanced water treatment, we're taking that highly-treated, recycled water, running it through additional treatment processes. Here at this plant, what we're doing is we're running it through a series of treatment barriers to clean the water even further. So it will have reverse osmosis here, also have MBR technology, which is membrane bioreactors, biological nutrient removal, and then we'll have ultraviolet advanced oxidation process with granular activated carbon contactors as well. So it's, we call it advanced water purification. In reality, they're proven technologies that have been used at treatment plants for many years. A lot of them, they're just not put in series like we're putting them here. So they, it's just gonna be, the water's gonna be the cleanest water that we'll be providing in Phoenix.
And using the finances of the project at all, like how the cost of the recycled purified water will compare to the cost of just fresh water?
It's a great question. It, we all, you know, we can't sugarcoat it. It's gonna be more expensive, but one of the things that we have to consider is how expensive is not having water? What is the cost of not having water? So what this is gonna do, it provides another water resource. But even looking at potential costs on the Colorado River, downriver, we've had people tell us that that cost is going up and up and up every single year. So when you start looking at the cost of advanced water treatment, it's actually very cost-effective.
And then a question for the elected, this was a question that, let me, um, were there any issues drawn down, um, before they ever get questioned as part of the, the competition, sort of shuffle and, uh, public freeze, et cetera, with the IRA?
Yes, and that's because all projects were, as you know, every single project that was in the pipeline was paused as they reviewed them for the various things that the administration wanted to review them in. Obviously, this project was, from the, from the areas that the administration was looking at projects and whether they wanted to stop them completely or not, I disagree with that, but that, that wasn't relevant to this project. Uh, you know, this project doesn't check any of those boxes. This was a good project. And most importantly, this is the so-called bucket two money. We needed to make sure that as we continue to draw down the money in the Inflation Reduction Act meant for drought in the desert southwest, that we don't continue to spend money to pay users not to use water, which bought us some time. But at the end of the day, we needed long-term conservation projects, and this is right in the sweet spot of the bucket two-type projects. This is exactly what we need to do to have long-term conservations, to draw down less of the Colorado River. And with the mayor's leadership, you know, not only with this project, but when they get 91st Avenue done with, in partnership with the other cities, because it's a region-wide effort, I don't know what the exact percentage is gonna be, but they will be drawing down a significantly lower portion of the Colorado River than they currently do, making that water available for other uses, including housing, if we need it for housing, or economic development, if we need it for, uh, for economic development. This is critically important to allow, to allow our economy to grow, this advanced manufacturing and advanced industries that we are in such an amazing time in our Arizona history in terms of the level of economic development we are doing. These kind of projects is critical. And it is critical as we're on these seven-state negotiations for the future of the Colorado River to show Arizona means business on conservation. It'll put us in a stronger position vis-à-vis those negotiations.
You mentioned the social aspect, you know, courting public trust. And I just was curious, you know, how do you gauge, I guess, the public understanding? And I guess on this technology now, and what are kind of goals or benchmarks as this moves forward?
Sure, and I think that's critically important. Before I answer that question, just to reinforce some of the things that both Nosario and Representative Stanton say, as far as the cost, yes, this cost may be slightly more than conventionally-treated raw water, but what you need to compare it to is the cost of alternative sources. What would be the cost of desalinating water and pumping that water from, you know, Mexico to the United States, or to the United States? What would be the cost of other new sources of water? So that's really the cost comparison that you should be thinking of. And also regarding Representative Stanton's comments about it's not only conservation, which it is, but it's efficiency. That's what we're driving is efficiency, is doing more with less, right? So more agricultural output, more economic put, output, more semiconductors, more everything with less water input. And that's what really this project represents, is just building on that long history of efficiency gains in this region and pushing that forward. To your comment about public trust, every approach possible, social science surveys, questionnaires, customer inquiries, public meetings, you know, we have had teams out at every festival that you can imagine engaging people in creative ways to learn their concerns and address those concerns directly with the appropriate evidence and fact-based responses. And so that's what I think is really important, is recognizing that, yes, people may have concerns, and let's just welcome those questions and engage them in a really important dialogue and doing it, as the mayor said, through, you know, whether it's high technology like virtual reality and video games, or we recently had an amazing event at the Rio Salado Audubon Center that was called Agua Es Vida that was particularly focused on engaging our Hispanic and Latino communities in their specific concerns. So everything that we can do to engage people is gonna help build transparency.
What is the status of the 91st Avenue project right now? And when is it complete? At the time that it is complete, how much will it contribute to cities overall in terms of the amount of groundwater that has access to it?
So that project is in very early stages. We've been working for the last couple of years with, initially, our director went out and spoke to the 27 water providers in the, in the valley to try to gauge interest for this regional facility. At this point in time, we're about two years in, and there's about five or six utilities that are still looking at building a, a regional facility. In terms of how, how long it's gonna take, there's a lot of hurdles to get, to get through, right? It's a very expensive project. There's a whole lot of negotiations that have to happen with the other utilities, lots of logistical things that we have to figure out, but we believe that if, if we can keep pushing and we get support from our elected officials and it potentially, if there's other money, other money to help us build that in the future, we could probably get something built by 2033, 2034 timeframe. In terms of the size and magnitude of it, it really depends on how many other cities and utilities are involved. It could be anywhere from, you know, 40 million gallons a day, all the way up to 90 million gallons a day. So it really depends on how many people are included, involved. When you look at the average water production here at the City of Phoenix, we're around 250 million gallons per day throughout, across our five surface water treatment plants. So that kind of gives you an idea of the, the level of impact that it would have in Phoenix.
And maybe just to add to that, there's real questions now about whether government can do big things, whether we can work together. Water is a great example that we can. When we announced 91st Avenue's big vision, the mayor of Mesa joined me in that. And we did it based on work that Scottsdale had been doing for more than a decade, so multiple cities working together. Here we are celebrating federal investment that will help make this vision go forward. It is multiple levels of government and multiple jurisdictions working together. It's because we understand the stakes. We have to get water right in the West. But it should be good news for people who live in our community, because we really are working together to deliver big results. I am so grateful to the mayors throughout the valley, as well as EPCOR, who have worked together with us on 91st Avenue. It is gonna be a win for our entire region. And again, we ought to celebrate. We're doing big things across jurisdictions.
Just one last question. I hear that point, you have the city level, we have the federal level. I mean, what is the state involvement at this point? And yeah, could you say, you want to guess, or state, like?
This, part of how this succeeds is that the state is our regulator, and they have been working very hard to make sure we have a clear process on that. So I want to recognize Governor Hobbs and Department of Environmental Quality Director Karen Peters, who have been really working on this. They also do a lot of the work around desalinization. And we have, in Arizona, on a bipartisan basis, put aside money for several different projects, including looking at desalinization. So I think on water, we still have bipartisan collaboration.
Any other questions? Oh, one more.
From both city, the city and federal level, can you give some remarks on the current new concept that's being considered for the Colorado River, the supply-based concept, and how you guys are working with a new idea in your conversations at your own levels with folks?
Okay, I'll jump in. I think you're talking about kind of the, the lower basin strategy about how we approach the negoti, obviously, these are very delicate and important negotiations. There's a brand-new leader of the Bureau of Reclamation who's been named. I hope he gets through the, the Senate process smoothly as possible, Mr. Cook, and I think he'll do a good job in that, in that position. And I think it's the right approach. I mean, we, we, the entire basin should share in the benefits and share in, share in the costs. I think it just makes common sense. And if, you know, people want to tie themselves to formulas of distribution from decades and decades ago, when Arizona was a much smaller city and a much smaller economy, that's not good, not just for Arizona, it's not good for the region. It's not good for the United States of America, because here's why. Those semiconductors that's, that are being built right down the street, that we need to continue to grow, and we're gonna need to do more reclamation and conservation in order to allow this most important industry, that's not, the success of TSMC is not just of importance here locally, it's nationally. They are making semiconductors that are fueling the future of our military and our military advancement. It is a national security issue that we be successful here in Arizona with what we're doing on semiconductor. Those are secure supply chain in the most important industry for advanced technology, as well as military advancement in, in technology as, as well. So this is of national importance, and it's important that Arizona have its fair share of that supply. And I think that what you described, that, that plan of kind of sharing, we don't want to do more than our fair share, we want to make sure we get our fair share based on the reality of the growth and both growth in people and economic development. We can't be forced upon policies that were based on decades and decades ago, when it was a much, much different situation here in terms of population and economic development.
Forty million Americans depend on the Colorado River. We have to get a deal that works. It's essential to Phoenix and our future. We want to be creative. Arizona did not cause global climate change by ourselves. The drought is hitting so many communities. So we need to make sure we think intelligently about climate change and what will be the overall supply and then allocate fairly. I can't help myself, I do want to push for, the Bureau of Reclamation needs good funding. We need to have scientists, we need to have attorneys who understand the complex law of the river. We need to have the best data and thinkers at the table so that we can get a deal done that makes sense for all of the stakeholders and ensures the continued success of the many states and Mexico, who depend so much on Colorado.
Welcome to Phoenix in About a Minute. Today, we're in a commemorative for Cesar Chavez here in Cesar Chavez Park.
Today, we stand next to the Cesar Chavez Commemorative that celebrates the life and contributions of Chavez. The little plaza symbolizes the agricultural fields where Chavez spent most of his life, working the land, and fighting for the rights of the field laborers. Four large blacks depict different aspects of Chavez's life as a leader of the United Farm Workers Union. Everything in the plaza has a significance, from the rows of trees and desert plants to the dry river wash, celebrating irrigation system that produces food. The bronze statue of Cesar Chavez faces the mountains and fields south of Cesar Chavez Park. The Cesar Chavez Commemorative was created by Zarco Guerrero, Martín Moreno, and Alinda Jiménez Madrid in 1998 for the Phoenix Arts Commission of the City of Phoenix.
It is my honor to welcome you to a very special occasion, our 200th class.
It is our 200th Memory Cafe class. Memory Cafe is, is a program geared towards individuals with dementia and their caregivers.
We are serving and, and supporting over 300 individuals every single week.
Definitely has grown from virtual to now having five in-person locations throughout the valley. Individuals basically participate in an activity that supports brain health for about like an hour, and then their caregivers are in a separate room receiving like support and guidance from like a support group leader.
They do a lot of the repetitive music, which is great, because then we know the words. And it, I don't know, it just brings that energy back into your body, and everyone participates in it. It's like meeting your friends after school and just hanging out and doing stuff that's fun.
It's really that consistency, the same day of the week, the same kind of group of people, that is the big payoff.
I'm surrounded by individuals that I feel 100% comfortable with.
Phoenix embracing being a dementia-friendly city is wonderful.
The building you see behind me was built in 1929, known as the Sun Mercantile Building, built by a man by the name of Shing Tang. He was the very first Chinese-born businessman to build such a warehouse within the city limits of Phoenix. He was also the father of Thomas Tang, a city council member, and later an appeals court judge for the United States. It didn't take long for Mr. Tang to make this warehouse, the largest grocery warehouse in the City of Phoenix. It was not only in the heart of the warehouse district, it was in the heart of the second Chinatown in Phoenix. The Sun Mercantile Building has been on the National Register of Historic Places since 1985, and is currently owned by the Phoenix Suns Organization. As a citizen of Phoenix, you can certainly come visit here at Third Street in Jackson and experience a building that is important to the City of Phoenix, the warehouse district, and also to our Asian-American community.
It is Tuesday, September 9th. Welcome to our policy meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilwoman Guadalupe. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Stark. Councilwoman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Thank you. We'll begin with council and us. Would anyone like to go first? Councilwoman Hodge Washington, or should I, shall I go first? All right. This month is a month in which we mark ovarian cancer awareness. Ovarian cancer, something that hit my family, and we just, it is a cancer that is often detected in very late stages when it is spread significantly throughout the human body, which makes it harder to treat. So just want to make sure there are free resources for genetic testing if you think you might have a risk, and there's great educational resources out there, but particularly important to pay attention to if your family has a history of cancer, particularly ovarian or breast cancer. And we're so thankful for the advocates and scientific community who are working on that. Want to recognize Don Logan for an incredible career, and we'll celebrate his retirement very shortly. And while we are celebrating, the American Planning Association Arizona State Planning Conference gave a incredible award to Plan Phoenix, the 2025 General Plan Update, as the top regional or general comprehensive plans. So first, congratulations to our voters. Prop 488 was overwhelmingly supported by nearly 80% of Phoenix voters in November of last year. Truly remarkable accomplishment, and thank you to the vice mayor and councilman Robinson for their work on that. Thank you to the Plan Phoenix 25 Leadership Committee chaired once again by Mostine, as he did in 2002 and 2015. And then the great, our wonderful planning chair, Councilwoman Deborah Stark, and the great team in planning and development, who went to so many meetings, studied best practices, and had great ideas. Our general plan was a great collective vision for the City of Phoenix. And could everyone who, in the planning department and their leadership, could you wave or stand up? So can we give them a round of applause for? Thank you for being at the top and for doing such a great job on our general plan. We appreciate that. And now, we ready for the District 8 PowerPoint? All right. And Councilwoman Pastor, I may go to your PowerPoint next, if you are ready.
You don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. We had quite a busy summer here in District 8, and I wanted to highlight a few of our events. Next slide, please. My office kicked off the summer with two pool parties. We went to Harmon and Pierce Pools and were able to connect with so many residents and city staff. I want to again thank Becky, the aquatic supervisor, for all of her support to make these events special. Next slide, please. Education remains, education for our residents remains a priority for me. I attended the South Mountain Community College State of the College, where I'd like to thank, I would also like to thank Arizona Foundation in partnership with Sun Valley Academy for hosting an amazing back-to-school drive, where our, my office was able to provide breakfast for all of the attendees. We welcomed over 1,000 people and made sure that they had all the supplies they needed to start the school year off right. Was also able to support, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, I'm, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. I have, I wanted to start off by acknowledging the Youth Ambassador Exchange Program. We got to meet with students from all across our, our, the globe, and they were, and their connection here with youths in our city. As well as, we hosted the Land Reuse Strategy Meeting, where we got feedback from residents on what additions they want to see in their neighborhoods. I'm excited to host another one tomorrow, September 10th, to provide updates from our last meeting. Next, congratulations are in order for Ali and Jessie for opening a new Turquoise Wine Bar, location on Fifth Street and Roosevelt. Be sure to visit their new store right on the, in the heart of Roosevelt Row. And then lastly, I was honored to join Phoenix Sky Harbor for this 90th birthday celebration. It was great to be surrounded by so many people who love our airport. Next slide. Education, as I mentioned, remains a priority for me. I'm, I'm grateful to see us have opportunities for all of our residents. I am grateful to see us have opportunities for all of our residents. I attended the South Mountain Community College Data of the College, where I had the opportunity to hear the vision for the upcoming school year. I also again want to thank Arizona Foundation in partnership with Sun Valley Academy for hosting an amazing back-to-school drive, where my office was able to provide breakfast for all attendees. We welcomed over 1,000 people and made sure we had all the supplies needed to start the school year on the right foot. I was also able to attend the Arizona Democracy Resource Center Back-to-School Bash. This event also provided free haircuts and hairstyles, games, books, and legal services. Thank you to ADRC for continuing to show up for our community in all the ways it needs. The New Pathway for Youth Scholarship Breakfast served as a reminder that there is always an opportunity for our youth to try new things and take new paths. I was honored to be one of their speakers at this event and celebrate the students' and program's success. Next slide. This year's League of Cities and Towns Conference again served as a reminder of the power of collaboration across multiple cities, towns, and different branches of government. I was also able to join accessory outreach services for their third annual breakfast, celebrating their continued commitment to the District 8 community through multiple programs such as their digital readiness for seniors, food giveaways, et cetera. I also want to thank the Housing Department and the Maricopa Lodge Number One for hosting the Matthew T. Henson Soul Food Sunday Event. I truly enjoyed spending the time with all of the seniors that were present, and I look forward to connecting with them again in the future. And I was also excited to announce the NCAA Women's Final for Countdown has officially started at Phoenix Sky Harbor. I look forward to all of the future events and opportunities for our community with this event in March of 2026. Next slide. And I also have to do, have you seen the latest episodes of Keisha on the Job? Most recently, I had the opportunity to be a park ranger at South Mountain Park and Preserve, and an airport navigator at Phoenix Sky Harbor. Both of the full episodes are available on my social media site, and again, please make sure to stay tuned because I may be in your neighborhood next. Next slide. My office and I wrapped up our round three of Energize 8 last night. We were able to meet with, within all parts of our district and ensure residents had direct access to the departments. Again, I would like to personally thank all of the residents for coming out, and all of the staff from Community and Economic Development, Neighborhood Services, Public Works, Police Streets, Office of Homeless Solutions, and the Parks and Recreation Departments for showing up to all three meetings. I look forward to our future collaboration to address our, the issues that our residents have shared. Next slide. Mark your calendar. My office is now accepting applications for our Youth Advisory Council. Any District 8 resident between the ages of 14 and 18 are eligible to apply. Applications are due September 19th, 2025. I'm also proud to announce that in collaboration with the Office of Emergency Management, we'll be hosting a trauma bleeding control training on September 20th. Make sure to sign up before the RSEP fills up. Next slide, please. And then, as always, if you need any help with city services or notice an issue in your neighborhood, don't hesitate to reach out to my office. That is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Who has additional updates or? Does anyone have an additional update? All right. I believe Councilwoman Pastor said she did not have an update, or she did, I couldn't hear perfectly.
I don't.
Okay. Then we will go to our agendized item, which is Public Safety Improvements Update. We try to provide our community with regular updates because we are committed to continuous improvement in public safety. I'll turn it over to our acting city manager to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. As our team comes down, I will introduce the item. We are pleased to be here today to provide you with updates on the public safety improvements that were launched under the leadership of the mayor and city council on September 24th, 2024. These action items are a comprehensive effort based on extensive feedback from our community under the leadership of the mayor and council, and made up of the collective impact of multiple city departments, including the Police Department, the Fire Department's Community Assistance Program, the Office of Accountability and Transparency, and the Office of Homeless Solutions. With me today are representatives of each part of this team. From the Police Department, Chief Matt Giordano, Assistant Chief Benza, and Assistant Director Jody Wolfe. From the Office of Accountability and Transparency, Director Shannon Johani. From the Community Assistance Program, Program Administrator DC Ernst. And from the Office of Homeless Solutions, Director Rachel Milne. Before we go into the detail of the update on the action items, we wanted to take this opportunity for Chief Giordano to share his vision for the Phoenix Police Department and how he plans to incorporate the work already completed and in progress into his strategic vision for the department in partnership with the community. Chief Giordano?
Thank you very much. Mayor, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to share where we've made progress, where we're focused today, and how we'll continue moving Phoenix forward. Over the past 12 months, the emphasis has been on three components that are linked: crime reduction, community trust, and continuous improvement. In our report today, you will see how these three components are foundational parts of all that we do. With a strong foundation, we will build a comprehensive strategic plan based on input from our community, our employees, and our council. The department has a mission statement. It's the why what we do. It's serve, protect, and reduce crime in Phoenix while treating everyone with dignity and respect. We also have a vision statement. That's our ultimate goal. That's to deliver exceptional police services, to work collaboratively with our community and our employees as a unified team to foster the highest level of trust and safety, and to value, support, and invest in our employees. Finally, we have our foundation, which is, which is pride. It's our core values. We use the acronym PRIDE: Protection and Prevention, Responsibility and Respect, Integrity and Ideals, Dedication to Duty, and Employee Excellence. Pride has been a part of the Phoenix Police Department for as long as I can remember. It's something we teach in the academy, we introduce in new employee orientation, reinforce during advanced training, and continually reference it in all that we do. Pride defines who we are as Phoenix Police Employees. It shapes our character and guides everything we do. As I begin my tenure as the police chief, it is important to reinforce pride, but also set expectations for every member of the Phoenix Police Department. Therefore, I am expanding pride by adding guiding principles that reinforce what is important to me, and I call it LEAD. It's leadership at every level, engagement with community employees, accountability at all levels and processes, and dedication to our mission. Pride is our foundation, and LEAD is how we will move forward. So today, we commit to lead with pride, protecting our community, building trust, and holding ourselves accountable. This will be the basis for our strategic plan, which we will build together with our community, our employees, and with our council. A strategic plan built around crime reduction, community engagement, and continuous improvement. Our goal is simple: a safe for Phoenix, where every resident feels respected and every employee is proud to serve. We also recognize the need to collaborate with all city departments to be successful. I now turn over the presentation to Assistant City Manager Lori Bays to provide an overview of our collaborative efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now, we will move into the one-year update on the council-approved public safety improvements launched last September. These action items build on more than a decade of work that has been done between the city and the community. We acknowledged when the action items were approved, and we acknowledge now that we need to improve. It's an ongoing state, a continuous improvement mindset. That has been our focus over the last year and will continue to be going forward. We will be accountable and transparent to the community, and when we make mistakes, we will acknowledge them. We will also celebrate our progress. While not perfect, each area we will discuss today will demonstrate our ongoing commitment to improvement. We have committed to improvement through enhanced policy, programs, training, and most importantly, accountability. And we are happy to share with you that of the 37 council-approved action items, we have completed 25 items, which is nearly 70%. The remaining 12 items are in progress. To walk you through our progress, you will first hear from the Police Department, followed by the Office of Accountability and Transparency, and then the Community Assistance Program, and finally, the Office of Homeless Solutions. All of those groups work together to achieve our goal of public safety and community trust. To start it off, I will turn it over to Chief Benza with Phoenix PD.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We're happy to come in front of you today to discuss our completed improvements, our ongoing improvements, and then next steps. At this time, Director Jody Wolfe and I will go over the completed and in-progress items. Please note, items on the PowerPoint in bold are council-directed initiatives. On this slide, we have created, on this slide, as you'll see, we have created new positions and hired employees to enhance our research and compliance efforts. Members of our Special Assignments Unit are required to operate their body-worn camera in the same manner as patrol officers. The policies and procedures of the department as it relates to internal investigations and the reporting of those investigations have changed to align with council's direction. We've established clear standards and accountability measures for the Professional Standards Bureau Investigators and Supervisors to ensure all relevant law and policy violations are fully investigated, and if relevant, referred to the Disciplinary Review Board. The city manager's approval is also required for any downward deviation from discipline as recommended by the Disciplinary Review Board. We've also restructured our operations orders for ease of use. The policies, which are public-facing, undergo a regular and routine review. For example, the use of force policy was one of many changes. There is now more clear language to assist our officers of when and how to use force. It prescribes a force must be reasonable, necessary, and proportional. The policy includes a de-escalation decision-making model where time, distance, cover, and communication are emphasized. We've enhanced our data collection through the use of new, our new records management system, created new forms and reports to meet requests from council and the community. We have added staffing and prioritized positions for better recruitment. New and revised training has been provided to employees. New technology has been launched, and I'll provide details in the future. Updated policies and ongoing outreach efforts have been completed, and we've also added additional oversight and reporting to include creating a division of Accountability and Transparency.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to highlight a major upgrade in our data infrastructure, and I'm very excited to share that earlier today, we officially launched the Motorola Premier One Records Management System, or RMS, replacing the outdated and beyond its end-of-life Hexagon system. This transition is currently ongoing and is proceeding as expected while we speak. This new system allows us to fully participate in the National Incident-Based Reporting System, or NIBR, which is now required for federal crime reporting and replaces the Uniform Crime Reporting System, commonly referred to as UCR. As council-directed, we have been working very hard to improve our data collection and reporting capabilities. Particularly the core data elements of age, race, gender, and housing status. Housing status has been a challenging data point to collect. That's because an individual's housing status can change over time, and the data collection system must be structured to accommodate these changes. In April of this year, we implemented a stopgap solution with a modification to the subject contact data form where housing status information and whether services were offered could be collected. And going forward, we will be able to collect the same information in the new RMS with additional improvements in data collection scheduled for Phase 2 of the RMS project. Going forward, the new RMS enhances our ability to collect and report on these core data elements for all of our police interactions, including self-initiated contacts, calls for service, uses of force, arrests, including both bookings and citations in lieu of detentions, and our parks and recreation interactions. These improvements will help us meet council's expectations for transparency and accountability. Here is a preview of what our new reporting capabilities look like. This example includes the core data elements requested by city council, including age, housing status, gender, ethnicity, and race. What is shown here are raw data ports, reports, but with the help of our new analytical tool called Peregrine, we will be able to aggregate and analyze this data across multiple platforms. This is a major step forward. Previously, we could only share raw data, which was often limited by inconsistencies in collection and aggregation, making analysis and interpretation difficult, if not impossible. The new RMS system and Peregrine were both approved by council to support our mission of being transparent and data-driven, and it will improve our capabilities going forward. Included in your packets for today's meeting is a summary of current and future data reporting capabilities, along with detailed reports for the month of July of this year for our police interactions previously described. This improvement in data collection and reporting capabilities was one of the council-directed items approved last September.
We have hired four new positions in the Organizational Integrity Bureau, three research analysts, and a supervisor. Their goal is to increase accountability, identify trends, identify gaps in training and officer performance, and provide qualitative analysis of officer interactions with the community. Our field investigations unit within the Professional Standards Bureau is fully staffed. We want to thank Councilman Robinson for his leadership on that effort. This unit will reduce the administrative work for precinct supervisors, which will allow them to be more involved with their employees as they handle calls for service and interact with the community. We have prioritized an increase in staffing for our Communications Bureau. We added a communications recruiter to our Employment Services Unit. We offer a hiring bonus of 7,500, which is the same we offer for police officer recruits. We've utilized the comp and class study to ensure our position and pay is competitive with other Valley agencies. And we've collaborated with the talent acquisition team from Human Resources to develop an improved strategy on hiring, selecting, and onboarding new communications operators. We've also created a procedure and metrics to request waivers for appropriate police recruit candidates through Chief Giordano and ultimately, the Arizona Post Board with respect to marijuana use. This has garnered us additional recruits we would otherwise have been unable to hire in the past. Chief Giordano championed this cause in his last position with the Arizona Post and continues to push for improvements here. The Police Department has also launched training for our employees. We train on how to utilize and expand the use of crisis intervention teams and the Community Assistance Program. We're training employees on community and organizational awareness, how to provide quality service. This has been taught in our supervisor retreats, which began in 2024. We've added a regular and recurring Professional Standards Bureau training. We brought in a law group to provide training to our Professional Standards Investigators, as well as members of the Office of Accountability and Transparency. We recently sent a number of PSP investigators to a conference to ensure we are at or exceeding national best practices. Our Communications Bureau has been trained on behavioral health to ensure they understand the caller and provide the appropriate response. In an effort to reduce wait times and improve operator availability for both Crime Stop and 911, through the leadership of Vice Mayor O'Brien, we purchased and are using Call Triage. It's an AI tool. This technology handles almost 18% of our calls to the Communications Bureau without a need to transfer the caller to Crime Stop or to 911. The average call using this tool is handled in less than two minutes. And although we have not used this tool very long, we've learned a lot about the tool and are planning some improvements in the next year. Community Connect was launched in August of 2024 to offer services to crime victims and those who call for police services. Through text messaging, we share updates with victims, and we can also keep those waiting for an officer on a call for service aware of the estimated time of that officer's arrival. And then we follow up with a survey to determine the quality of service provided. More recently, we have engaged the services of Zen City Blockwise to elicit more feedback from the community. The first report from this tool will be delivered in December.
To provide an update on our Community Connect and to support our survivors, we launched the Sexual Assault Kit Community Connect Tracking System in April of this year. This is a featured enhancement to the Community Connect Program. This tool provides 24/7 access for survivors to track the status of their kits and follow their case. Survivors can enter their case number, verify their information, and then view the detective assigned to their case, including their contact details. They can also opt-in to receive automatic alerts, including notifications about arrests. This system is about more than transparency. It's about empowering survivors with information and restoring trust in the process. And since we're on the topic of sexual assault kits, we'd like to share an important update with you on the reduction in the backlog of untested sexual assault kits, which does not include those that have entered the testing process. Thank you to Mayor Gallego's leadership and city council's support. We have made significant strides in reducing the backlog by 91% since August of '23. This is a significant accomplishment, and while it will always This is a significant accomplishment, and while it will always be an ongoing effort, it is clear that our focused efforts have made a measurable impact.
Twelve updates were made to our Professional Standards Bureau and the manner with which it conducts business. This has required changes to their Bureau manual and our operations orders. We've shared their Bureau manual with you for your review, and we've created a cadence for policy owners to review and revise policies. Any change to policy will be accompanied by training to ensure our employees understand the new policy prior to its implementation. We have added an additional civilian and sworn member to our disciplinary review board. Both the city council and the civilian review board will be updated on public safety reforms in writing every three months. Mayor and members of council, we included this report in your packet today. The civilian review board will get their update at their next meeting, September 26. Additionally, city council and the civilian review board will be updated on the police department's compliance with Oat recommendations every six months. This report was also included in your packet, and the civilian review board will get that at their next meeting as well. We are not finished with recommendations, and we want to bring your attention to those items which remain in progress. We continue to find and launch new technologies. Data compliance is vital for our accountability and our transparency. Members of our vulnerable populations need appropriate services. We are working to improve how we interact with our youth. New training is essential to improve and continue to hold our employees accountable. Staffing remains a top priority in delivering quality services, and constant review and revision of policies must continue. Thank you, mayor and council, for approving the purchase of Public Portal. This will become our central complaint and complement intake and management system. This system will allow for better data collection and reporting. Our Professional Standards Bureau collection records all citizen complaints. A regular review of the data and its trends is done to determine whether additional policies or training is required. This information, as mentioned before, is provided to both the city council and the civilian review board. We're preparing a dedicated hotline for compliments and complaints as a one-stop-call location. All 311 operators will know where to send callers. And please note, both the hotline and public portal are being created in a partnership with the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Next week, we will ask you to approve the purchase of an early intervention system. Should this purchase be approved, our early intervention team is prepared to hit the ground running to use this tool to identify issues with employees prior to misconduct. The image you see on your screen is an example of our new scorecards. These cards will provide the community, council, city, and police leadership with a snapshot of our employees' activities. We have color-coded the percentiles for faster review and will offer more detailed audit information to assist leadership with remediation or commendation of our employees. Our compliance team is prepared to audit samples of police reports and body-worn cameras to ensure our officers are following both policy and law. This process will evolve with input from the community, from council, and from city and police leadership. We are adopting policy to allow our crisis intervention team to prioritize urgent and sensitive matters. Our thanks to you, mayor, for your leadership with this. A biannual training plan is being offered to our crisis intervention officers, which consists of eight hours of training. Four hours will be directed by the police department, and four hours are elected. We're also looking for avenues to encourage our officers to become trained in crisis intervention to better serve the community. The Arizona Department of Transportation developed a program known as the Blue Envelope Program. It is designed to alert officers of a driver or citizen's disability. To date, more than 500 blue envelopes have been shared with the community by police employees. Want to thank Councilwoman Stark for her dedication to the vulnerable members of our community. Our crisis intervention team is leading one of our programs known as Smart Notifications. This is a voluntary program, which allows residents to share specifics with officers who may respond to their home. The information provided is to alert officers to specific considerations to allow a more productive interaction and allow dispatchers to send the proper resources. Under the leadership of Councilwoman Wadardo, we conducted a survey of youth, which resulted in more than 2,000 responses. The information gained was instrumental in the creation of our new youth interaction policy. This policy will be available later this month for community comment. We've created a youth advisory board, and our thanks to you, council, for providing $500,000 of block watch funding to help us explore and procure youth prevention programming. And in that spirit, we're working with external partners, such as the Maricopa County Juvenile Probation Office, to find and deliver prevention programming. We will soon deliver enhanced customer service training for all of our public-facing employees. While procedural justice and customer service classes have been taught in supervisor retreats, these classes will be delivered to all employees in our upcoming 40-hour training modules set to kick off in quarter one of 2026. We're also exploring what sworn positions can be converted to civilian. This includes adding police civilian investigators, police assistants, and policy and data analysts. Deployment options are constantly being reviewed, for example, adding a second shift to investigations, and reviewing our overall staffing numbers to ensure we meet the needs of our community. Our sworn positions amount to 2,636. We feel we are turning a corner on hiring and have hired 136 recruits as of July. In 2024, we hired 159 recruits. Lateral's and reinstatements are another area where we have seen a significant increase. Community feedback for our policy creation is key to delivering services. In September, the less lethal tool policy will be out for public comment. In late September, the youth interaction and interacting with individuals experiencing homelessness policies will be out for comment. And in October, we will solicit comments on our K-9 policy. Chief Giordano will close out our portion of the presentation with his vision for your police department.
Thank you. I began my presentation today outlining the foundational components which got our efforts. Those are, again, our crime reduction, community trust, continuous improvement. As a result of building from these components, so much has been accomplished in the last year, but we're just getting started. We know there's still much to do, and we are committed to ensuring safety, strengthening trust, advancing a culture of accountability. From the beginning, I promised to listen closely to the needs of our community. That feedback is guiding us as we shape a strategic plan focused on preventing crime and driving continuous improvement. I renew my commitment. We will lead with pride to build a safer Phoenix where every resident feels respected and every employee is proud to serve. Before I conclude, I'd like to take a moment to express my gratitude to City Manager Jeff Barton and Assistant City Manager Lori Bays. Both have been supportive while providing guidance and setting expectations for me as I navigate my new role with the city of Phoenix. I'm honored to be the police chief. Thank you. At this point, I'll turn it over, the presentation, to Shannon Johani, the Director of the Office of Accountability and Transparency.
Thank you, chief. Good afternoon, mayor, members of council, and members of the public. Thank you, as always, for the opportunity to share with you about the continued growth and development at the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Since I last shared, Oat has both sustained and expanded. Our team staffing increased by 33%, expanding from nine to 12 staff. The remaining three of our 15 allocated positions are in the process of recruitment, with the goal to have the open positions filled by the end of 2025. This small but mighty team has worked diligently to exemplify and expand in each of our core functions, our five Rs: reach, review, report, resolve, and repair. Oat's community engagement team focuses on reach. With the goal to share widely and consistently about Oat's role with those most likely to access Oat's services, this team has connected with more than 13,000 community members since July of 2024. The team has also tabled, attended, and presented at more than five dozen events and organizations in the last year. With each contact and each event, the Oat team refines the message and method for best serving our community. In addition to this core function, the team has built and begun piloting Oat's inaugural youth outreach program. We've shared with each of you about the vision and value we hope for this program and are excited to continue the conversation with each of you as we bring it to high schools in your districts next year. Bridging reach, report, and review, the ordinance mandate to support services to impacted community members has also begun to take shape. Oat reached out to and connected with staff at the Family Advocacy Center to establish working relationships with the FAC's Critical Incident Liaisons. The FAC's liaisons serve as the link between community members who've been involved in a critical incident and relevant city services, including the police department. Most incidents that fall under Oat's mandatory review authority are the same incidents where these skilled advocate services are dispatched. The first goal for the collaboration between Oat and the FAC's liaisons is to engage in regular collaboration to ensure timely, transparent communication and information sharing. An added benefit of this working relationship, it is that Oat now has a greater connection to all Family Advocacy Center staff and clientele. The Oat leadership team joined the FAC Victim Services Team in early August to share about all of what Oat does and offers, and how Oat can support them and their clients as they navigate interactions with the department. Next, to review. We are currently reviewing 146 department administrative investigations and have published 29 reports as of this meeting. The most recent report was released August 21 and has a department response due on September 20. This report contains one new recommendation that is not reflected in the discussion regarding department compliance with Oat recommendations, since the department's response is not due until later this month. Oat reports will release monthly, and the civilian review board will review reports approximately two months after reports are publicly released. As of July 31, 2025, Oat has issued 20 independent recommendations across 21 of our reports. Some recommendations carry across multiple reports due to timing of report release and implementation dates. The department agreed with 18 of those 20 recommendations. To date, the department has implemented or updated manuals or operations orders for all agreed-upon recommendations. Department disagreement with Oat recommendations was isolated to two reports and were fact-specific. Oat has been able to review and verify that the department's implemented response effectively resulted in improvement in three specific recommendations. One, identify the source of allegations or investigation initiation. Two, provide written analysis and supportive findings. And three, ensure that the ordered training aligns with the completed training. All three of these ensure greater transparency as they give insight into why an investigation was conducted, whether it was department policy, external or internal complaint, how the department reached its conclusions or investigative findings, a key aspect of procedural fairness, and what remedies were actually implemented, centering on whether the response addresses the concern. The department has modified operations orders and PSB manuals to embed the changes in their documented policies and procedures. Their agreed-upon recommendations focus on two primary areas of administrative investigation: robust and complete Professional Standards Bureau investigations and transparent documented reasoning to support decision-making. First, robust and complete PSB investigations through thorough interviewing regarding discrepancies in evidence and statements, thorough interviewing regarding allegations, thorough interviewing regarding law, policy, and training, and thorough interviewing regarding an officer's consideration of de-escalation tactics and less-than-lethal methods. Additionally, robust and complete investigations can be ensured through a complete review of all available relevant evidence and ensuring that all potential policy violations or misconduct that has been alleged is addressed. The second general area is transparent reasoning and decision-making by detailing in custody death criteria and providing written analysis for the Professional Standards Bureau, the Critical Incident Review Board, and the police chief. For all additional agreed-upon Oat recommendations, Oat has not yet completed a review of factually similar incidents to verify that the changes to operations orders or manuals have resulted in the improvements. Oat will continue to review investigations to ensure that the implemented revisions meaningfully result in improved investigations, accountability, and transparency. Oat will begin releasing review reports of investigations that occurred after implementation efforts by the department in 2026. As those reviews are conducted, Oat will assess whether the department's implemented actions resulted in meaningful improvements to department administrative investigations. Resolve and repair, our mediation. Five department-level, sorry, excuse me, PCC, Phoenix City Code Section 20-1C, requires Oat to conduct mediation to resolve disputes. To carry out this mandate, Oat has built a mediation program that allows for both department and individual officer mediations. Department and individual officer mediations are voluntary, confidential, and held in a neutral setting, so participants can engage meaningfully and thoughtfully. Oat's mediation director has coordinated and conducted five department-level community police mediations to date. One example includes a concern from a community member who was part of his neighborhood watch program, who felt that a recent interaction with Phoenix Police officers was aggressive and threatening. Through the mediation, the community member was able to explain how actions that may be understandable to officers may present negatively or differently to community members. Officers were able to explain how the community member's behavior presented to them. Understanding of each other's perspectives was a key takeaway for all participants. Oat continues to work with the department to finalize the details of the individual officer mediation program. Individual officer mediations will serve as an opportunity for one-to-one facilitated conversations between an officer and a community member as an alternative to the traditional complaint resolution process. This work touches on multiple department and city processes and has involved significant time and energy contributions from Oat, the department, Human Resources, and the Law Department. Draft operations orders that provide high-level processes and guidance for these mediations are nearing completion. The council-established civilian review board has held seven meetings to date. Six of those seven have centered on equipping the board with the knowledge to carry out their duties. We've educated the board about the Oat ordinance under PCC Chapter 20, Arizona Revised Statute Section 38, 1117, which is the state law that affects Oat's work, Professional Standards Bureau processes, the Force Evaluation Review Unit, the Peace Officer Bill of Rights, constitutional principles in criminal law, and the use of less-than-lethal tools. The board has been enthusiastically engaged throughout the trainings, which have been a joint effort between the department and Oat. As the board continues to engage with Oat reports and department responses, members will continue to receive training on case-specific topics, as well as other questions for topics that arise. The civilian review board will hear the Oat reports and department responses approximately 60 days after publication. All Oat reports now reflect the department response due date, as well as the date that each case will be heard by the board. Oat will connect with each council district as the board's meetings are scheduled throughout the city. The board's first formal board business meeting is on Friday, September 26, 2025, at the Agave Library. Following presentations by Oat and a PSB representative, the board will issue findings on calendared reports and recommendations. There are five findings the board can issue after their review. Adopt, adopt with revisions, decline, decline with revisions, and additional information required. Oat staff will forward all board findings to the police chief and the city manager after each meeting. As Oat, the department, and the civilian review board work through the Oat recommendations, department responses, and CRB findings and recommendations, Oat staff will continue to track and report on the status of all recommendations, responses, and implementation results. Thank you, mayor and council, for the continued opportunities to share about Oat and the great work the team is doing. Members of the community can reach out by phone, email, or in person at the Oat office, which is 350 West Jefferson. We have reviewers available Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., to receive complaints or commendations in person or by phone. Members can also leave a voicemail or send an email, and we will respond during those business hours. We do have a member of our review team here today, who is also Spanish-speaking, who can assist any members of the public who wish to file a complaint or commendation or would like more information about Oat. So at this point, I turn it over to Community Assistance Program Administrator DC Ernst.
Thank you, Shannon. Mayor and council members, pardon me, it's an honor to appear before you again today to provide an update on the Community Assistance Program expansion, following your $15 million investment to establish behavioral health units and the expansion of the crisis response teams. Today, I'll be reviewing our recruitment, hiring, and staffing, as well as transferred calls and how our units are doing. To date in 2025, the Community Assistance Program has successfully completed five onboarding classes. The onboarding process includes 120 hours of classroom-based training, followed by 160 hours of field training. We are currently onboarding our sixth class, and we anticipate launching our seventh class before the end of this calendar year. As a result of our recruitment and hiring, we are excited to report that we have reached 93% of our staffing goals. One of the primary goals of the investment was to establish an alternative response model for individuals experiencing mental health crisis. Community feedback made it clear that there was a strong need for options beyond traditional police and fire response, particularly in situations where individuals' primary needs were mental health or substance use. In response, CAP has continued to collaborate with Police Communications Department, sworn officers, and the Fire Department to identify calls where a behavioral health unit could serve as the sole response team. The objective was to develop and deploy nine new behavioral health units capable of responding to 911 calls for mental health services. As of June, CAP has successfully met this goal, staffing nine behavioral health units and achieving 24/7 coverage. In addition to these efforts, the crisis response units continue to operate as a co-response capacity alongside police and fire personnel. These units are dispatched to incidents involving traumatic incidents, such as house fires, unexpected deaths, domestic violence, and child abuse investigations, just to name a few. a few. CAP remains committed to expanding the crisis response capacities and capabilities. We continue, we are continuing to recruit for crisis intervention specialists to reach our goal of 10 fully-staffed crisis response units. Currently, we have achieved 60% of this goal with six crisis response units providing 24/7 coverage five days a week and 22 hours of coverage two days a week. We anticipate reaching the goal of 24-hour, seven-days-a-week coverage in the first quarter of 2026. Another accomplishment of CAP during 2025 has been achieving the goal of having a BHU dispatcher being available 24 hours a day to receive calls from police communications. In July, CAP, in coordination with the police communication, increased the presence of a community assistance supervisor in police communications. This presence grew from 31 hours a week to 41 hours a week, enhancing the real-time support and coordination. This slide illustrates the increase in calls transferred to a behavioral health dispatcher. When comparing the first seven months of 2024 to the same time period of 2025, there's been a 98% increase in the number of calls transferred for a behavioral health unit response. Several key developments in 2025 contributed to the increase in calls transferred. Two I've previously mentioned, the increase in behavioral health dispatchers, as well as the increased number of hours that a supervisor is within the police communications. Another contributing factor was when CAP Police Communications and the Police Crisis Intervention Training Coordinator coordinated a release of a department-wide training which guided sworn personnel and the communication staff on how and when to request a behavioral health unit. This slide represents the total calls for service. Comparing again the first seven months of 2024 to 2025, there has been a 102% increase in call volume. The total calls of service represents the calls transferred from police communication, co-response with fire and police, and teams identifying individuals who may need services. This substantial growth reflects the continued expansion and integration of BHU services across the city, as well as increased awareness in the utilization of these specialized units. This slide illustrates when our behavioral health teams were implemented. Our first team went into service in late 2022 with a limited response area. By July of 2023, we increased that total to four units, and they started responding citywide. We've added an additional team in 2024, and then we added an additional four teams in 2025. An example of a behavioral health team's engagement is that recently during an outreach effort, the behavioral health team noticed an individual who was at a bus stop, and they observed this individual searching through the garbage can. The team approached and engaged the individual who shared that they were looking for food. The individual reported having recently relocated to Arizona in an effort to maintain sobriety and that they had been sober for two weeks. The individual disclosed that their injury had been treated already medically, and through further conversation, the team learned that the individual had a history of suicidal ideation, although at the time that we engaged with that individual, they did not have suicidal ideation. The BH team immediately provided support, such as offering water and snacks. Together with the individual, they developed a plan to connect the individual to longer-term services. That individual agreed to be transported to a local community partner, and our BH team facilitated that transport and completed a warm handoff to ensure continuity of care. This slide highlights CAP's successful responding, successfully responding to 93% of the calls for service without the need for police or fire involvement. This rate of single behavioral health response has remained consistently at or above 73% in 2025, demonstrating CAP's effectiveness in independently managing a significant portion of behavioral health-related calls. This slide represents the calls for service for our crisis response units. Again, comparing the first seven months of 2024 to 2025, CR units have experienced an 8% increase in the call volume. This upward trend again highlights the growing demand for crisis response services and the continued relevance of crisis units in addressing crisis-related incidents in the community. I want to share with you a recent collaboration that we had with other city departments. The community assistance programs were mobilized to support the Office of Emergency Management, Neighborhood Services, and, hold on, I just forgot the name of your, and, sorry, and another department who I can't remember the name of right now because I'm nervous. We all responded to a couple of incidents in the community where apartment complexes were without air conditioning. Together, as a coordinated effort, CAP assisted on knocking on apartment doors to ensure everyone impacted was contacted. Those impacted were provided with heat relief resources to ensure safety during the extreme heat. CAP offered transportation to heat relief centers or to family and friends' residence as needed. This rapid and coordinated response highlights strong interdepartmental coordination and commitment to the community's well-being. Crisis response continues, as I said earlier, to respond as a co-response model with both fire and police departments. As a result, approximately 90% of their calls involve a concurrent response with either fire, police, or both. This integrated approach ensures a comprehensive and coordinated response to crisis incidents, ensuring safety and support of individuals in crisis. This slide represents the goal of CAP, to have a response times under 25 minutes. It's important to note that CAP units are required to comply with all traffic laws while responding to a call. Unlike police and fire services, we do not use lights and sirens, which obviously impacts our response times. While there is currently no national standard for response times among alternative response units, our collaboration with the Harvard Kennedy School of Government Performance Lab indicates that our average response times are comparable to those observed in other jurisdictions offering similar services. As noted in this graph, in July, the behavioral health unit's average response time was 19 minutes, and the behavioral, in the crisis response, average response time was 21 minutes. As CAP continues to, continues progressing towards the goal of fully staffing 10 crisis response units, we remain committed to ongoing recruitment, onboarding, and training of crisis intervention specialists. This continued growth is essential to achieving our objectives of stabilizing our staffing levels and ensuring consistent 24/7 responses. In parallel, we are strengthening our collaboration with police communication to ensure the most appropriate resources are dispatched at the right time. This coordinated approach enhances both the safety and well-being of our community and supports CAP's mission of delivering timely, effective behavioral health and crisis intervention services. And now I'd like to pass the presentation to the Director of Office of Homeless Solutions, Rachel.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here today to tell you about some of the additional progress the Office of Homeless Solutions has made in adding resources to the homeless service system since our last update with this group and to provide an update to the areas where OHS and Phoenix Police are furthering our collaboration. As you know, OHS began in July of 2022 and became operational in October of 2020, of that year. Our focus for the first three years was clear. Create shelter capacity for our system, excuse me, create shelter capacity for our system and creating that capacity throughout the city, not concentrated downtown. Create a safe outdoor space where people who aren't ready for an indoor shelter can safely camp and receive services to help them in their homelessness. Address the encampment around the Key Campus, our community's largest encampment, ensuring that we close that area to camping in a humane manner. Create the community court, providing long-term solutions and services for people as an alternative path to the traditional criminal justice system. Create property storage programs for both people entering services with property and for unattended property citywide, ensuring people's property is not thrown away. Work with our sister departments to offer enhanced heat relief efforts and provide specialized services for those who may be experiencing homelessness. And of course, to create housing, which is the ultimate end to a family's homelessness. Some of our major accomplishments in these first three years are the creation of over 1,200 beds in 10 different projects and not concentrating all of those beds in the downtown region. Creating the safe outdoor space, which can accommodate up to 300 people, and in its first 1.5 years of operations, has a 39% positive exit rate. We've had 623 community court participants in our first year and a half, with 149 graduates and only eight instances of recidivism after graduation. In the last two years, we've operated extensive heat respite services, including our 24/7 location, which this year has already helped place over 500 individuals into services. We are in the process of developing a 126-unit of supportive housing complex for people exiting homelessness. At last, we have hired professional staff with expertise working with individuals experiencing homelessness, improving our ability to respond to community needs, and to directly connect people to services when available. One key program I'd like to provide you with an update on is property storage. OHS put in, into place our property storage programs in 2023, and as you may recall, OHS includes property storage programs at all of our new shelter sites. When we open or fund a new shelter, we ensure they have ample storage for property to accommodate the belongings of individuals entering that shelter. We also fund a property storage program at the Key Campus. The campus serves roughly 1,000 people per day, and our storage program allows people to access those services while storing their belongings. And lastly, OHS has a formal procedure for unattended property, which provides guidelines for how our team assesses, provides written notice, and stores property at an unattended encampment. The process involves a notification at the encampment that we were there, and we will be storing the property when we return. Once we return 24 hours later, if the property remains and the owner is still not present, the property is stored and an additional notice is provided to help the individual connect with us to obtain their property. When an individual reaches out to be reunited with their property, we bring it to them, allowing for an additional engagement opportunity. Since the unattended property storage program began, we've stored 233 containers, and 25 containers have been returned to the property owners. We are also partnering with the Phoenix Police Department to adapt our established property program to meet their needs and to partner as needed as their program is developed. OHS and PD have continued to grow our partnership in many ways since we last updated you. We continue to hone our process to conduct what we call coordinated efforts. These efforts occur when OHS is working in an area that requires both homeless service provisions and also assistance from PD to address criminal activity. Our OHS liaisons have direct contact with community action officers, sergeants and lieutenants in each precinct and have a process in place to schedule these efforts when they're needed. OHS completed an e-learning training this summer, which provided an overview of the Office of Homeless Solutions, who we are, what we do, and how we can work with officers in the field. We provide resources on how officers can access OHS staff and our contracted outreach providers after hours and access shelter directly when they have an individual looking for resources. The training was assigned to lieutenants, sergeants, officers, and reserves in early August and has a 58% completion rate. Both the city's Safe Outdoor Space and the Phoenix Navigation Center are considered closed campuses, where individuals must be referred by OHS, an outreach provider, or Phoenix Police Department. We made sure these sites had public safety referral, a direct public safety referral access, because we understand that public safety officers may interact with individuals looking for shelter and services in times when OHS or our partners are not physically present. We're pleased that these two city-owned sites have become real-time resources for officers looking to connect people with safe spaces and resources. Since we started tracking this data, we've had 40 police referrals and one fire department referral to the Safe Outdoor Space, and five police referrals and one fire department referral to the Phoenix Navigation Center. One story I'd like to highlight is that of a 49-year-old woman who was referred to the Safe Outdoor Space by a police officer in May of this year. She had been experiencing unsheltered homelessness caused by a dispute with her family. She also reported that while she was unsheltered, she experienced violence. Once she was referred to the Safe Outdoor Space, she was provided with stability supports and with assistance to reconnect with her family. And once we confirmed that her out-of-state family was going to be a stable housing situation for her, we provided her with transportation assistance so she could be reunited with them, where she is currently stably housed. That's all for OHS. Thank you very much for your time, and I'll turn it back over to Lori Bates.
Thank you to the team and Mayor and Council. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lori, and to the team. So many of these functions didn't exist just a few years ago. Others have expanded greatly, so thank you. The records management is like sending a kid off to college or work, and so thank you for all the work that went into that. I know that's a priority for many of my colleagues, including Councilwoman Hod Washington, who just wanted the accurate data, and this will give us a chance to query much more quickly, so very important. We also appreciate the training across departments so that each of our departments or functions knows what's available in the other functions and can take advantage of that. Council members, we do not have any members of the public registered for comment, so I'll turn to you for comments or questions. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. I don't think anybody should be surprised. I want to start with the police questions first. On Slide 30, under the new trainings, right, in the attachments also, one of the pieces that's talked about is the customer service training. One of the things that I've had conversations a lot about is how officers and detectives are speaking to families when they're going through a traumatic or event or experience their loss. So in this customer service training, is that a piece that is incorporated to ensure that our officers, our detectives, and any law enforcement, any of the police department that has interactions and has to communicate with families that are impacted by policing, they are treated with compassion, they're treated how they need to be treated, to not make a tough situation they're in even worse? Is that incorporated into the customer service training piece?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez, yes. We train that in our customer service and our procedural justice classes. We also provide that training in the academies before they start their careers with how to engage, how to de-escalate, and how to minimize people's frustrations when you're out with them, having a very bad day.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think I'm less asking about like the de-escalation side, but I'll give you an example, right? Let's say, and this is a real example that I had a constituent reach out on. There was a family that experienced a loss of their daughter to a substance use overdose, and in the way that that family was handled, they shared with me that it was just not, they were not spoken to or handled how they should be, right? They felt very mistreated and just dismissed of their experience, and it was really hard for them to gain information or even get calls back. So I'm speaking more specifically to that treatment. How are we providing the utmost customer treatment to our residents? Like, is that piece incorporated, and will it, or will it be worked into this continuous plan, continuous improvement plan that we are speaking about?
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Hernandez, yes, it will be included, and we have expectations of our employees that when they do contact members of the community, that they speak to them with courtesy and with respect, regardless of what the training is. It's also part of our operations orders and part of their expectations. So yes, it will be included, and that will be reinforced.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the response, Assistant. Chief, as the new leader of this department, just curious on your thoughts around that.
No, I concur with what Chief Benz said. I spent many of my years in investigations to include child sex crimes, adult sex crimes, and homicide, so I'm very, very familiar with trauma-informed investigations, trauma-informed dealing with families. So yes, it's a priority of mine, and we will continue the training that Chief Benz spoke of.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. My next question, I'm not sure if this is a question for Lori or maybe even Jody, but can you share with us what the difference is between PSB, which is the Professional Standards Bureau, and O, and why we have both?
Mayor, members of the council, I will start, and then if anyone has anything they'd like to add, please feel free. But what I would say about the difference between the two, Professional Standards Bureau does the administrative investigation for a misconduct or potential misconduct incident. They conduct the interviews, they make the conclusions as to what occurred relative to a policy violation or no policy violation. What Oat's role is, is to review that investigation to ensure that it's thorough and complete, and if it's not, to make recommendations on how, going forward, a similar investigation would be able to be more thorough and more complete. So it doesn't necessarily speak to that particular investigation or make any changes, I should say, to that particular investigation, but it does make recommendations going forward. So those are the differences between the two bodies, but they do definitely work in tandem to provide a complete product for our officers and our community.
Thank you for that. My next question is just around the first attachment. So attachment, I think it's Attachment A, that lists the 37, and what we saw a lot, the majority of the discussion. the majority of the discussion was around the 37 changes that the city identified and the council approved, I believe, a year ago. The first 13 items are related to PSB and how they conduct investigations, which raise a little bit of a disturbing question regarding what PSB has been doing prior to 2024. Can either of you speak to what was happening before we made these changes a year ago around the investigative process with PSB? Because it sounds like there might be a little lack there of a process, and why these changes became such an immediate need. You know, it seems like maybe they were not a priority prior to September of 2024.
I'll start again, and then if anyone has anything to add, they can do so. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, I'll tell you that most of those items came from the OAT recommendations in the initial reviews that they did, and we can always improve. So the PSB investigations, while they were following what they believed to be best practices at the time, the recommendations that OAT has made has allowed us to improve the investigations and provide more thorough and complete investigations as a result. And so that has been, you know, part of the continuous improvement process. I think it's a great example of the continuous improvement process and how we, as an organization, need to strive to continue to get better. And having different eyes, different lenses on what we do, not just PSB, but everything that we do, is a way that we can find things that we can do better, figure out how to make them better, provide the training or whatever it is that's needed to accomplish that goal, and then, you know, have better success. And so it's a continual process that we go through, and this is an example with PSB of how we have had an outside lens through OAT, looking at those investigations, and we've been able to make some improvements as a result.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. My next question is on recommendation number 17. That's on Attachment A, and that requires that special assignments units must have, must use their body cameras. Now, this is a unit that has been involved in multiple very controversial cases, which actually, one of those cases led to the Department of Justice opening an investigation here in Phoenix. You know, a few of those cases have some of the most egregious examples of police violence. The Jacob Harris case is one that I can point to, where the special assignment unit baited, or baited these people into a situation where they can then use force when they could have easily intervened earlier. I guess my question is, why was this unit allowed to be exempt from having to operate their body-worn cameras and avoid transparency when other officers within the department at that point have been or were required to use their body-worn cameras pretty much at every interaction?
Mayor, I go members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez, that's an excellent question, and we do utilize them now. So all, currently, all SAU officers are fitted with body-worn cameras and must use them when engaging in the public, the exact same philosophy that we use and policy we use for our patrol officers.
Thank you, chief. But my question is, why did it take until September of 2024 to make that change? Because I want to give a little background here. When my brother was killed by Phoenix PD officer, at that time, body-worn cameras in 2019 were not a requirement for all officers. That summer, after the Ames case, I think the council made a decision to require that officers wear body camera are on and on in interactions. I wasn't aware that the special assignments unit was exempt from that. So I'm looking for an answer on why did it take until last year to make that change, that it required that unit that, prior to last September, was involved in multiple egregious cases that led to a Department of Justice investigation?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, so that particular unit was phased into usage of body-worn cameras along with the rest of the department. I believe they actually began using body-worn cameras in 2019 or 2020. Is that correct? 2018? So it wasn't 2024 that they began using body-worn cameras. It was actually earlier. Where this came from is it was part of the request from council in 2024, and our response to that request was that that unit, in fact, did already have those cameras. They were just phased in as part of the overall department phasing of the implementation of body-worn cameras. They were later in that process, however, it was much earlier than 2024 that they began using them.
Okay. So just to confirm what I'm hearing, that unit was required to use those cameras, but so was this just a PSB manual change? Was it just to pretty much put it into policy that they were required? If they were phased in, right, not every officer or detective in that unit was required to wear them. So I'm still finding the disconnect. So they were, it was just a PSB change in September?
There was no change in September of 2024. It was just a clarification for mayor and council that those officers in SAU do use body-worn cameras. So the question was raised, and our report back was, yes, we do use them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's the clarity I was looking for on that piece. What community involvement or input have we sought out to confirm whether these 37 items that were identified in this report and are being worked towards are the appropriate solutions, and are those working? What have we built around the community input piece?
So mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, there are several things that we are doing to continually gain community input. One is related to our policy development. We are continually engaging the community now with major policy changes and gathering feedback before those policies are finalized. That is going to be an ongoing process for us going forward. We are also going to be engaging the community, as Chief Giordano mentioned, as we develop out the department's strategic plan, which is going to encompass both continuous improvement as well as crime reduction strategies, and we will, we will ask for the community's feedback on that. And we are using the Blockwise tool, which is a technology tool where we can gather survey data about how the community is feeling about public safety and about engagement with officers in the community as well. And so we're going to use all of those different tools, as well as, you know, other engagements that our department has in the community through your offices, through other community meetings, through our community action officers. There are many ways that we gather community feedback, but those are some of the formal ways that I mentioned.
All right. Thank you. I think that's just really important, that we never lose sight of that, since community members are the ones on the receiving end of interactions with our department. So I want to make sure that I'm continuously, and please expect me on my office, to continuously advocate and make sure that the community is centered when we are looking at policy updates. I think it's just a critical piece in this work. Okay, my next question, I have a few more questions. So only two of the 37 items identified in Attachment A address police officer behavior, which ultimately is at the center of a lot of the problems that, you know, I have spoken about and others have spoken about. Attachment D has a list of action items that the department is working on to address officer All of those are in progress. So what other steps, or some, most of them, most of those are in progress. What other steps in the city manager's office, or is the city manager's office taking to address the critical central problem around police behavior?
So mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, I want to make sure I understand your question. So are you asking about beyond the training and policy changes, what are we doing to ensure accountability?
Yes.
Well, so one of the things that we're doing is, and what Assistant Director Wolf mentioned a little while ago about our data collection is really important to this, is we are now able to track data in a better way and report out in a better way that's going to allow us to share information. So for example, uses of force. That is a very important topic, and it's a topic relevant to officer behavior and accountability. We need to be able to show the community what percentage of interactions result in a use of force, what type of use of force occurs in those encounters, and what is the behavior of the person that they're encountering as well. So what is the whole picture of the incident, right? So we want to be transparent about all of those things. Our data systems are now getting to a place where we will be able to show that information both to you all as our policymakers, as well as to our community, and to be transparent about that. The other thing that it does is that it allows our city leadership, especially our police executive team, to look at that data and to make management decisions based on data. So they're not, you know, simply talking about anecdotal situations. They're actually looking at what is occurring, what's happening in the community, what are our officers doing as a result, what trends are we seeing? You know, if we're seeing a lot of uses of less lethal tools in situations where that may not be appropriate, what do we need to do to retrain or clarify what the policy is before, you know, perhaps something more serious occurs? So we need to be able to look at those things and be proactive, and our data collection is going to allow us to do that. Another example you saw in the presentation is the Body-Worn Camera Compliance Scorecard. Those scorecards allow us to look at the precinct level and to really identify what is happening as far as officers following policy. Where is it occurring the way it's supposed to be? Where is it maybe occurring not the way it's supposed to be, and how do we address that and pinpoint maybe officers or squads of officers that maybe need some retraining? You know, maybe the entire precinct needs some retraining. So the data allows us to look at those things.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I, you know, I'm, as Councilwoman Hodge Washington is really driving on data, like I want to get as much data as possible and make sure that we are transparent in that with the community. So I'm really looking forward to the new RMS and just seeing how that's able to capture. Because I think on the opposite side of that is, it's great to share the data with the community, it's great to know what is happening, and these are a lot of different reforms, right, or, and changes. So just this attachment, we're talking about 37 today. But ultimately, and I have said this multiple times, if these, if we make all these changes and all these reforms happen, and we still have officers that fail to follow those and refuse to do their job, and they fail to meet policy and processes and operations orders that are set, I still don't see anywhere in here that we are going to truly address accountability. The data piece is one part of the accountability, but to, I think, for me, we're not going to change behavior unless there's actual substantive consequences to that behavior or how they, how our officers are engaging in behavior. So if there's no path to actually make sure that we are not having officers that either abuse our badge or fail to follow policy, these reforms and these changes are only going to go so far. So I would love to hear, maybe not today, but at some point, I hope that we also look at that side of accountability. Because we can do all this work, but if ultimately the officers that refuse to follow these or fail to follow these are still on the job, then what are we making the changes for? And how are we ever going to change the department? And my last question for you, Lori, is how often is the city manager's office meeting with the department to review these lists of items and ensure that we are in compliance with them?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, I meet with the police chief either weekly or every other week, and we discuss things related to these items in every single meeting. I also meet with the team that is managing all of the continuous improvement projects at least twice a month to go through the project status and identify where we're at with each of those. And additionally to your previous comment, I meet with the team that is the chain of command over PSB every other week in order to go through their cases, what they're finding, and also to discuss, you know, just trends and things that they're seeing in their investigations so that we can identify, one, where do we need to increase training and ensure consistency also in disciplinary actions and ensure that, you know, if there are concerns with that in particular, that those things are addressed properly at the proper levels.
Okay. And I just thought of a follow-up. Lori, can you work on getting the updates on how many times officers that are, that face disciplinary action that dispute their job with the Civil Service Review Board get that job back compared to other civil employees?
Yes, we can, we can provide that information.
Thank you. Have a couple of questions for OAT. Thank you, Shannon, for all the information. You know, we've been in conversation a lot with your department. Can you share with us or help me understand the relationship between your office and PSB?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez, our relationship is, we have to have a working relationship with the Professional Standards Bureau. Primarily, that interaction is, we receive a report every two weeks of the active investigations that PSB has ongoing, and then our other communications really center on exchanging information, evidence, reports, things like that, that are in the Professional Standards Bureau possession, sending those over to OAT so we can complete our reviews. So really, it's an information-sharing relationship for the most part. In terms of working on processes and procedures, we primarily do that with executive leadership at the police department.
Okay, thank you. And that was actually, you answered part of my next question. I was going to ask, like, what's it been working with? Like, what has it been like to work with PSB? And is that positive, or is there any room for improvement there?
I think there's always, oh, mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez, I think there's always room for improvement in any working relationship that we have. I think we have made significant strides compared to where we were in September of 2023 when I started. Last Friday was my two-year anniversary with the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Did I ever think this is where I would be sitting? No, but I'm thankful to be here. I feel like we've made some incredible progress over the last two years. One thing that I can note, I recently sent out an email discontinuing, not discontinuing, but sort of handing off a monthly meeting that I've been participating in for the last two years, because I realized, one, having a director in there has a chilling effect. Also, having higher levels of leadership has a chilling effect. So being able to hand that over to the line staff, to be able to work out what they need to without me having to be involved or executive leadership having to be involved, and then transitioning our executive leadership team at OAT into a monthly meeting with the executive leadership team at PD, so that we have decision-makers meeting with decision-makers. I think that's been one of the probably biggest challenges, and it's not a problem with PD necessarily, it's just inherent in any hierarchical organization, is that we have the top-level decision-makers sitting here. So if I'm engaging with anybody below that level, it's all going to go up to them anyway. So at a certain point, we just said, okay, for that type of stuff, we're just going to engage at this level, but we want folks that are doing the work to engage with each other so that we don't have that sort of interference. But I think it's improved significantly. We have regular, ongoing communication. I'm able to communicate openly and clearly. When we have information-sharing issues, I reach out. I think Chief Benza and I probably exchange 15 to 20 text messages a week and emails saying, hey, this is going on, can you help us problem-solve it? And across, and it's across the department, so Public Records, PSB, FARU, OIB, and the executive leadership staff, and they've all been very open and welcome and engaged with us appropriately and professionally.
Thank you so much for that. And what is the process for a case getting assigned to PS2O versus it being assigned to PSB? I know you touched a little bit on it, Lori, like the PSB handles the administrative side of it. Does that question make sense, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay.
So OAT does not, nothing is actually assigned to OAT. So the only things that would be OAT-originated would be if somebody files a complaint or commendation through OAT rather than through the Professional Standards Bureau or another avenue to file a complaint. When ARS 381117 passed in 2022, that removed OAT's ability to do investigations into policy violations or police misconduct, because the ordinance requires that we have no law enforcement agency employees or personnel on our staff, but that state law requires two-thirds law enforcement. So that removed our capacity to do investigations. So when the city came back and reconvened, the determination was that we would have sort of an audit review slash monitor model. So what we do is we review closed department administrative investigations to evaluate whether or not they're thorough and complete, and then make recommendations. We may make recommendations where an investigation was thorough and complete because we see an opportunity for improvement. And so that's what those recommendations were that we reported on. So that's really what OAT's role is in relation to investigations at the Professional Standards Bureau. We do occasionally have some cases that don't go through PSB. They may have gone through FARU or some other evaluation processes at the department. We may still look at those, depending on what the facts of that case are.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last question for you is, in Attachment E, it lists several recommendations, and I think you touched a little bit on those in your presentation, that were made to PSB by OAT. Some, majority of those were accepted and others rejected. What happens when PSB rejects your recommendations, and who ultimately has the authority to dismiss your work?
I can't speak specifically for the department about what happens when they disagree with an OAT recommendation. In those particular cases, I can speak to the two cases that they were. Both were very fact-specific. Both were very fact specific. So one involved a use of force in which we had recommended a full Professional Standards Bureau investigation along with one other recommendation, but that had gone through the FARU process when it, through the Force Evaluation Review Unit, when it was still in its pilot form. So that was the disagreement from the department there is that their determination was it was appropriate for a FARU evaluation rather than a full Professional Standards Bureau investigation. The other one was in the incident with the Wall Street Journal reporter where we had made recommendations and the department disagreed based on fact specific items in there related to discipline and the police chief's deviation from discipline. And so in terms of what the department does, at that point in time, we didn't have the civilian review board. We've had agreement with all recommendations since those first two reports where there's been disagreement. I think at this point, what would happen, what we anticipate is if there's not agreement, we would do presentations to the civilian review board, and the civilian review board can sort of help sort that out. I think that there's always an interest. Chief Benz and I have begun a conversation about the OAT reports to make sure that the department is understanding what we're asking for in those recommendations. Part of the challenge is there is, we're not police. And so when we make a recommendation, what it looks like in our head maybe doesn't translate on the page in the same way. So Chief Benz and I will have a conversation, and I'll say, here's really what OAT's trying to get here. And he says, okay, I understand that. So that we can be on the same page of what we're trying to achieve. And when OAT makes recommendations, we do it with that understanding of how this will improve. And that's always what our focus is, is how is this going to make an improvement? How will this improve those investigations so that there is increased accountability through the PSB investigations?
Okay, thank you so much. All right, I have two questions for OHS. On attachment D, number two directs Phoenix PD to make behavioral changes for how their officers treat people experiencing homelessness. What changes have you seen? Of those changes, what has been good or what can be improved on?
Sure, mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez. So all of our outreach workers in the field have the, have the direct face-to-face work with our, excuse me, all of my outreach staff in the field have the direct face-to-face work with PD. And we've just had a lot of, of good interaction when needed. We always utilize PD as a last resort. We're always going out and offering outreach first and only utilizing PD. And we've always had very good response times and they're freeing themselves up in order to help us when we ask, so.
All right, thank you. And can my office get a full briefing on the Individuals Experiencing Homelessness project that's referenced in the report? Specifically, we'd like to understand the department's, like, police's involvement. We've talked about this multiple times. How police is still being used and the steps the department is taking to reduce using police to engage homeless residents. I've said it publicly, I've had conversations with, with you directly. I ultimately just do not believe that police will resolve our homelessness issue because they do not provide any direct solutions to that issue, right? It's going to be housing, it's going to be wraparound services and others, those wraparound services that different individuals need. So if we can get, set that up, that would be, that would be great. And then I just have a few questions for, for CAP. Is there a separate number that the community can call to engage with CAP that isn't routed through 911 and the police department?
Mayor, council, Councilwoman Hernandez, at this time, there is not, but it is something that we hope to plan for in the future.
Okay, and what would it take to have? I'm assuming besides funding, what would it take to build that out?
Mainly the staffing to make sure that there's someone to answer that call 24/7.
Okay, so funding, staffing, okay, perfect, thank you. And how, well, I guess that would lead into my next question. How as we as a council can increase the usage of CAP over police to respond to mental and emotional crisis moments?
Mayor and council, Councilwoman Hernandez, I think you guys are doing an excellent job when you do your outreaches. We've been invited to several of those outreaches to talk about our services. And I think it's just continuing to let the community know as well as for us to continue to build our trust with the community as our teams go out and just make contact with people prior to 911 calls being made.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And my last question is, you know, from your perspective, what kind of impact would it bring to Phoenix to be in a position to expand the CAP program? And just make it like a stronger, more robust program?
I'm sorry, I'm rereading your question because.
Yeah, like in your opinion, what would, what kind of impact would building a more stronger, robust, and expanded CAP program do for, for Phoenix? Like, what kind of impact would, could we possibly see?
Thank you, mayor, council, Councilwoman Hernandez. I think there's many positive things that could come from that. One, as we've talked about from the very beginning, the whole purpose of it was to make sure that the right services are sent at the right time and to prevent officers and firefighters from having to be social workers in their job. So I think it would, it would increase the ability for our, our community to have trust that the right service is being sent. It will eliminate fire and police personnel from having to play that role of social worker as well as it helps us engage with our community partners to build a robust system where we can get individuals into the services in a really convenient and effective way.
Thank you so much. That's all my questions for now, mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, mayor. I want to start off by saying thank you to all of you for presenting. It was very comprehensive, and it is, it's, it's a step in the right direction. I'm grateful, especially as men, been mentioned before, the data collection. Jody, you know, we have gone back and forth. So I'm very excited to see that we are making the strides because I believe that if we don't keep track of the data, it makes it difficult for us to, to assess the effectiveness of these changes. So I wanted to start off by commending us on being able to move that issue forward because I do believe it is significantly important. I have tried to remove any questions that may be duplicative of those that may have been asked before, so I'm going to kind of jump around as well. My first comment goes to the presentation of information. I think because we are in this role, we understand the role, we know what these things mean. I think it is a little, especially I'm talking about attachment A. I think it is a little, maybe a little difficult for our community, our members of the public to follow along. So my feedback would be, one, I would like to see it in a little easier, digestible form for, for the public. But more importantly, I want to, I want to understand when we say something is complete, right? I want to make sure that we are understanding, like, what is the intended impact of this policy change? So I think we need to also, it's not a completion. It's, it's great to say we've done it, but I think we need to go to the next step. What do we intend to see now that this policy has been adopted and accepted? What are the intended outcomes that we should see? So in other words, I think we need to, next step is considering the metrics for success when it comes to these policy recommendations. Because I was part of the, myself, the mayor and councilman Robinson, we, we wrote these. We thought many of these recommendations that came from the council, we had ideas of what they should look like. But if the policy changes are not truly affecting the areas that we think it should, I think we need to know that. It might hurt my ego, but I think we need to know, are this, are we truly addressing the concern? So I just wanted to put that out there without exactly saying how we need to say it. But I think we need to look at what the metrics of success would look like with these policy changes. Because, so that goes back to my initial concern about making sure the public understands how these reforms are actually going to translate to changed behaviors and changed cultures on the ground. So I would definitely like to see that. These quarterly updates are very helpful to continue the conversation. I think it helps us to move forward to make sure that we are not losing any time and we are continuing to prioritize this. I, I had one question regard, I have multiple questions, but I have one question regarding the early intervention system. That's the system, chief, assistant chief, you were talking about, we are going to be asking for some funding next week for? And it's supposed to help us identify issues before they escalate? Can you talk a little bit about how that tool will be utilized?
Absolutely, thank you. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, the early intervention tool is a predictive tool that takes into account hours of an employee worked, how many calls taken, what type of calls those are, any disciplinary events happening, any commendations as kind of a complete picture of that officer. And then it will predict which officers are ripe for misconduct or ripe for misconduct based upon how many hours worked and any changes to what they do. For example, an officer many years ago when we were practicing this, had a number of calls for service, a lot of hours worked, and then there was a moment that the officers had changed, less reports taken, less hours worked, and more complaints. And that's what this will identify. And it will help us to work with our employee assistance unit and our employee assistance program to provide service to that officer or that employee to correct behavior before it becomes misconduct.
And what would be the, would there be any parameters of availability for their supervising officer or employee to determine that this person, although the system says this person's at high risk for, because we all know if we are not getting enough rest or we're overtopped, we sometimes tend to be reactive versus responsive when dealing with others. So could their manager or their lieutenant decide, okay, this person is safe? What are the parameters, if any, for bypassing this early detection concerns? Because we, the reason I ask that is because we are, it's no secret, we are short officers, we do require, we do utilize overtime as a way to make up for that shortage. I just want to make sure we understand the parameters for that.
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, if I understand your question correctly, what can a supervisor or can an employee avoid the recommendations of the?
Correct.
They can, as it's written, as our policy is preparing, they can avoid or they can say, no, I don't, I feel I have any issues. And they can also use our employee assistance unit, which is covered under Arizona state law, that they can get services without police department supervisors knowing about it. However, they're also, if they choose not to utilize the services we'd like to provide, then they're opening themselves up to misconduct investigations and potential discipline. And that's what we would try to explain to them. And we'd use resources either from their chain of command or their family to assist.
Okay, thank you for that. My next question, I'm jumping around a little bit. Let's go to attachment B. I think it's also, like I said, I'm more so concerned about making sure our, our members of our community can read the packet and understand the things in the packet. Can someone explain what laudermill means for the public?
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Hodge Washington, laudermill is a court case, and a laudermill hearing is from that court case. It's essentially when a employee's behavior or actions are so egregious that we bypass the disciplinary review board and we send that employee to the police chief. He or she and their attorney would basically ask the chief or explain to the chief why they should not be fired. And the chief can take that into consideration and can choose to send the employee back to disciplinary review board or levy discipline.
Thank you for that. My next set of questions go to, trying to keep them consistent, goes to some of our hiring. I know we talked about the positions that we are filling. I just did a little review of, I think this was the last or the second to last PSJ. We did a recruitment hiring and attrition report. And let me find the best way to explain it. I see that the, of course, there is some, you know, there is some drop off between who applies and who ultimately hires. At what stage of the hiring process are most applicants being disqualified or dropping out of the process?
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Hodge Washington, applicants can drop out at any stage in the process. We do a background investigation, which is called ESOP, which is their application. We then put them through an Arizona post application. And Arizona post has some specific parameters of who can become a police officer in the state of Arizona. If they don't meet that or there's issues with their ESOP and their background, then we can make disqualifying notices at that point. We then bring the, the potential employees in for an interview. We put them through a background interview. We send them for a polygraph examination. And then we send them for a psychological exam and a medical exam. Should all that be, be found within our standards, then we hire the, that potential employee.
Okay. As I mentioned, I saw what I view to be a discrepancy. For example, one demographic is applicants are 38%, sorry, it's 12% of the applicant pool, but they're only 9% of the actual hire. Another demographic was 31% of the applicant pool, but 47% of the actual hire. And I found that, that disparity to, to be concerning. And I just wanted to ensure, is the department considering whether or not certain demographic groups are disqualified at a higher rate than others? And if so, what are we doing to ensure that our police force represents the demographics of the community in which it serves?
Mayor Gallego, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, we share your same concerns. We want to make sure that our department best represents the diversity of our community that we serve. So we will take a closer look at that. As far as what Chief Benz has said, we'll also take a further look into if we can actually delineate where we're losing the majority of the people through that application process and hiring process. As Chief Benz has said, it is very complex, and people drop out along the way. But we'll do the best we can to take a look at that and see if we can actually determine where we're losing most of our applicants. And a lot of that is out of our control, whether it's they failed to meet minimum qualifications at a state level or they, they don't successfully complete a physical fitness exam or a polygraph examination, it just depends. But we'll do our best to whittle down those numbers. We'll also take a look at our hiring and who we're hiring and are diverse because again, we do want our department to represent the community as closely as possible.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, if I could just add to that briefly, this is something that we have been looking at very closely over the last probably couple of years. And so I do want to give credit to the Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee because they have been holding our feet to the fire as it relates to exactly what you're talking about, Councilwoman, looking at the disparities in applicant pool versus who we hire. We have made some strides. We are not exactly where we need to be yet, but we have made some improvements in those areas. We have also really looked at the hiring process and where we're losing people and made some significant process improvements there. Doesn't mean that we don't have further improvements that we can make. We absolutely can continue to look at that. What we continue to do is to find where could there be subjectivity in the hiring process and how do we eliminate subjectivity? And we have found several places where we can do that already, and we are continuing to do that through our process. We are currently looking at the background interview process itself and looking at the questions and how we can minimize subjectivity in that process. We are also now looking at the retention side of things as well. So once we get people through the hiring process, which we are doing much more successfully now, we need to make sure that we keep them employed with us and that they are successful. And so we are finding that we are losing folks both in the academy and also during the field training, officer portion of their training. And we want to minimize the number of people that we lose during that period as well. So we are heavily focused on that. And so I want to point out Vice Mayor O'Brien's leadership on that. And she's been, along with the rest of the Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee, very focused on this.
Thank you for that, I really appreciate it. I know it's, it's one thing for us to be working on it, but I want to make sure that we are not doing irreparable damage. There are some demographics that have been hesitant to be members of our police force, and they take that step to apply. And if they're not getting the necessary feedback, and they become more disillusioned with the process. So we want to ensure that we are provided some level of feedback or suggestion of reapplication if it's been a technicality or something of that sort. I mean, my end goal, I'm not a member of the PSJ Subcommittee, but my end goal is to make sure that our force does look, our department does look like the community in which it serves. And I think bringing a number variety of individuals to that role, it does help that. So I just wanted to point that out. So thank you for the efforts on that. And I would, hopefully, the next update will show we are making some levels of strides or some feedback, and we are tracking that. So, thank you. But overall, I do think that we are making good progress. I do have some questions regarding the data that was attached as Exhibit C. And that goes towards, I'm going to talk a little bit about my district. District eight led in felony bookings. The volume signals either concentrated challenges. And narrowly forty percent of the arrestees were listed as experiencing homelessness in that situation. I also saw drug possession and paraphernalia and probation violations were top charges. And I think there needs to be, I need to, I think we, do we have a consideration for some level of diversion for, how are we using, are we still, I don't know, I don't see the number to see how many of these individuals are actually going through our community court versus just being straight, going straight to criminal cases?
So Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, I will, I will give you the reality of the situation with regard to our data reporting and analysis. What we've provided to you was the data elements that were requested at the last meeting. And we are, we are providing that raw data essentially to you at this point. Those data sets have not yet been analyzed for what we can learn from them and how we can move forward to address perhaps disparities, perhaps trends, other things that we can learn from the data sets. And so that would be the next step. We are poised to, with our new system, be able to aggregate data and actually have some software tools that will allow us to have some assistance in analyzing that data rather than doing it on a manual basis. But right now, what we've been working with is just essentially raw data sets that then has to be manually analyzed and, you know, looked at to decide how we move forward with what the data shows us. So it's a process. We certainly have opportunities to learn from the data. I myself found multiple things as I was looking through it where we have opportunities to learn from what we see and how we, how we can incorporate things like you just pointed out, you know, cross referencing community court data with those data sets to see where are we connecting people with community court where it's appropriate and where are we maybe missing folks that would be good candidates? And so these are all opportunities for us as we move forward and as we use our data analyst team that Chief Benza talked about to, you know, build out what they do on a regular basis and looking at these data sets and analyzing the data.
Thank you. Fair enough. I know we just got the data, and I'm asking for a complete analysis. So I'll do this, I'll ask this a different way. What would, what would we propose to be the timeframe in which we actually come back and look at this information? Because I don't want us to just continue to collect the data and not gain anything from it. Do we have any insight as to when our review process will be and recommendations or trends or any idea of when we will see kind of like, here's what we have learned from the data?
I'm going to ask Assistant Director Wolf to speak to that.
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, one of the tools that I talked about in this slide is a data aggregation and data analysis tool called Peregrine. Council approved that purchase earlier this year. That is being on boarded shortly after RMS. Obviously, our focus was to get RMS online, to be able to collect the data. Once the data is collected and we have greater capabilities, then we have opportunities to then utilize the Peregrine tool to analyze those, that data set across multiple platforms to include platforms like Community Court. So once we're able to do that, we'll be able to develop those systems. So we have the data collected, then we'll have the tool to analyze that data. Once that analysis methodology has been developed, then we'll validate those methodologies to ensure that we're, our answers are correct. Then we'll be able to share that. So that's going to take some amount of time, but we are working very diligently. That is our very next priority after we've made it through all of the RMS transition.
So what I heard was that it will take some amount of time. And I don't know what some amount of time is quantified as. Is that six months, twelve months, eighteen months? I'm just trying to get an idea of expect for expectation for me. Otherwise, I'm going to ask it every time I sit here. So help me help you.
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, we absolutely understand the importance of being able to have access to this information as well as the capabilities afforded to us through the data analysis tools. Our goal is to be able to afford that information to you by our next quarterly update. But I would asterisk that with, that's dependent on our abilities to thoroughly validate those systems. So that's our goal. And we'll keep you apprised as to our progress in meeting that goal as we move forward.
Thank you. I'm jumping around. I think the next, my next question goes to attachment D. More so, my question is regarding item number two. And there's a couple of them also that have the same timeframe. But item number two, that is a Treatment of Individuals Experiencing Homelessness project. That is estimated to take, estimated timeline of thirty-three months. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, that is the initial time period from the beginning of that project until completion. It is not from now.
No, I know it's not from now, but it's from, from the, from the adoption of our original recommendations?
Yes, ma'am.
So that takes us out to, what is the timeframe? Sorry. So that's almost three years from when we originally adopted the recommendation, correct? So that's, so that was last year, twenty-four. So this is about a twenty-seven, is that what we're thinking?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, we expect that policy to be out for comment later this month. Then revisions of that policy from, from community comment, I believe that number to be significantly shorter than what we estimated.
Okay. Because of course, as you can imagine, my concern is I want to make sure that we don't just have a long process without any true tangible change for people that are experiencing homelessness. All right. So you anticipate that we will likely, you said the policy is probably about to be prepared for public, a draft comment, for comment, a draft policy for review and comment by the public?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, yes. That will go out for comment later this month. We will review the comments from the community, prepare the operations order and get law to review before we make that an official policy.
And will it, I think it will take the same, well, I presume it will take a similar time period that it did for our use of force changes to be, to train all of our officers regarding this new policy. So when do we anticipate its actual effective date?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, I believe the training for this policy will be, will be less intensive than the use of force policy, because this one is a new policy versus a change to an existing policy. Changing how officers did business to a new form of doing business, I think this will be a much different plus timeframe, although I'm hesitant to give you exact timeframe now.
You know where my next question was going.
I would like, I would love to, but it will be done as soon as we can. It's a priority for Chief and the rest of the executive staff.
Okay. My next question is also on Exhibit D, and it's going towards the Behavioral Health Pilot Program that is going to start next, in October, next month, in precincts, six hundred and seven hundred precinct.
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, yes. We're doing a pilot program of how we could utilize our crisis intervention teams and how we can utilize them more effectively. That will begin as a pilot in two precincts, which are busy precincts and have calls for service that involve behavioral health matters.
And with this pilot program, do we believe, given our current funding and staffing, would that be able, if it's a success, to be scaled citywide?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, yes, that is our goal. We're looking to incentivize the position to make officers want to do it. We're looking at avenues of what will bring people into the program who are patrol officers now, who can take that experience to a regular patrol squad and offer further services versus having to call out a crisis intervention team member whose numbers are minimal and don't work all those different shifts. So we're really focusing to get more involvement so that our squads are more able, more able, I should say, our officers are more able to provide the services that people need.
Okay. Thank you. I'm coming up. I'm almost into my question for PD. I wanted just a couple, I just had a quick question regarding the sexual assault kits. The, we have a track-in tool. I presume that that available track-in tool does not negate the interpersonal or one-on-one conversation with, if the victim wants that communication?
That's correct. Part of, that's part of the tool. Sorry, Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, Community Connect is an enhancement to the services currently afforded our survivors. It is, one of the requests that our advocacy groups have made to us through multiple discussions is the ability for survivors to anonymously engage and have access to that information. Them being able to control when they access that information and what information they want to review is very important to them. So this allows us to do that. This is in addition to those personal interactions that we have with them, both from an investigative perspective as well as a services perspective through our colleagues in the Family Advocacy Center with our victim advocates.
Okay. Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that they weren't being told to just only update, check for updates online. So thank you for, thank you for that clarification. I think that covers all my notes for PD. So next up is Office of Campaign Transparency. Shannon, I have a few questions for you as well. I know the disagreements have been isolated to reports more so fact-specific. And you talked a little bit about the verification in 2026 as to, I see you nodding your head in 2026. Can you tell me a little bit more about that and how those, how that verification process will play out or how you anticipate it playing out?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, the way that will work is so, Oat Reports will release approximately two years and ninety days after the incident date. And then, so what that then dictates is that because Oat Reports started releasing in 2024, we can't release in our, the timeline for our authority to start reviewing incidents was from 2022. So in order for, to allow that two years plus ninety days to run, we make sure that that runs before we release a report. And so since we didn't start making recommendations till 2024 and those implementation dates didn't start happening until 2024, we're not going to be able to release reports that are post-implementation until two years and ninety days post-implementation. So it's going to take us a little bit of time. In places where we've seen it, like the three that I listed on, I don't remember which slide number I can find that, we've been able to see that because we still are getting documentation and reports that have come out since then. And so those were, for example, identify the source of allegations. So even though we haven't been able to release review reports, we're able to see in the PSB reports that it's more clearly identifying, was this a department policy-initiated investigation? Was this a community complaint-initiated investigation, those sorts of things? So we've been able to see that, but we haven't issued a report that can analyze it. So some of those more technical ones, we can verify now. The ones that really, we're looking at whether or not it's a systemic change. So changes to the, for example, there's lots of times we've made a recommendation to illicit answers regarding law policy and training or officers' consideration of de-escalation tactics. What we're hoping, what you said before in a previous recommendation, is that we need to understand the intended impact of the policy change. So that's what we're going to be assessing for, is the intended impact of the recommendation was, did it improve the investigation so that there's more insight into the officer's decision-making processes? Because, because for Oat's perspective, that's a lot of what's going to aid the department and how to respond to these incidents that they're investigating is, did the officer understand the law policy and training that surrounded this particular use of force? What did they consider? So for example, we had a training recently at the Civilian Review Board from Lieutenant or Sergeant Jake Rasmussen, Sergeant Rasmussen. And one of the things he talked about is the things that officers are supposed to consider as they're moving through their consideration of less-than-lethal tools and de-escalation tactics. And so one of those is characteristics of the suspect, right? So things like language barriers, communication barriers that may be as a result of mental illness or impairment from other factors, and how the officer considered those in their response to this individual subject. And so what we asked of PSB was to do more thorough investigating related to that. So what we would see sometimes is there'd be a question that would say, for example, did you believe that the person was suffering from a mental health crisis? And the officer would say, yes. And then the interviewer would maybe just move on from that point rather than saying, how did that affect how you engaged with this individual? Did you consider, maybe this person's not, non-compliant because of an impairment rather than just a desire to be non-compliant? And how did that figure in? And not to say that an officer is in or out of policy, but in order for the department to understand where to make improvements in training, maybe with this individual officer overall, they need to understand how the officers understand the training and policy, and we can't get there if we're not asking thorough questions about it.
Thank you. That, that makes sense to me. So thank you for that. Next up, Community Assistance Program. I have a few questions for you too, Deezy. Not going to be left out. I am, I mentioned last time, I was very happy to see that your Behavioral Health Unit was a hundred percent capacity. You were filled those positions, because I do believe a significant number of the problems that we see are individuals that are dealing with behavioral or substance abuse issues that, that need a professional touch when it comes to doing that. So I, one question I wanted to ask was specific to, what are the impediments of collaboration or why aren't we collaborating with more departments? For example, I presume that the Office of Homeless Solutions also has interactions with individuals in behavioral health. I would presume that NSD also may have issues with those individuals. And I just wanted to know if there's any, it didn't, wasn't highlighted here, and I don't know if because of the nature of the report you were given, or I just wanted to talk a little bit about that.
Mayor, Council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, thank you for the question. I just don't think I emphasized that we do collaborate with across departments within the city. It may obviously not be on every single case that we come in contact with, but we have worked with the Office of Homeless Solutions specifically around the heat relief stations. Oftentimes, if there is a concern, our teams will take individuals to the heat relief station, or we've actually been called to heat relief to address some behaviors at some time and see if, where there's some things that we can provide. So I wouldn't say that there's necessarily any conditions that prevent us from collaborating. I think it's just taking us time to figure out how do we all work together to meet the bigger needs.
Okay. So I would like this to prioritize some way of extending the applicability and the outreach and collaboration with the departments. That was one of the feedback I've heard from the community, is making sure the departments are not acting in silos, that we are more collaborative and many of these issues overlap, and how to ensure that all of our, because all of our, our team players that are needed to be in that one room are there at that time. Then my next question is for Office of Homeless Solutions. I'm an equal opportunist question. I wanted to talk, I just wanted, I know the answer to this, but I think it may be helpful to explain to, for the public on Slide seventy-three where it talks about Phoenix Police and Fire Direct Referral Sources, sources of the Safe Outdoor Space and the Phoenix Navigation Center. And I think we want to talk a little bit about what are the requirements to be able to go to the Safe Outdoor Space? Where does this individual have to be found? Same thing for the Phoenix Navigation Center.
Sure. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, thank you for that question. So both our Safe Outdoor Space and our Phoenix Navigation Center are what we consider closed campuses. People cannot walk up and request services at the location. They can't walk up and request a bed or a meal. These are referral-based sites only, which means the Office of Homeless Solutions usually is referring individuals from, say, Heat Relief or some of our other sites. But also, we are prioritizing our outreach teams for those sites as well. So for example, the Safe Outdoor Space prioritizes the area in downtown and around the campus for the Safe Outdoor Space. Our Phoenix Navigation Center, which is located in District Seven on Seventy-first Avenue in Van Buren, prioritizes the mile and a half radius around that site as well for outreach services for direct referrals. However, again, people in those areas cannot just walk up and request services. They must be referred to those services by either the Office of Homeless Solutions or our outreach teams, Community Bridges, Inc., or, as I mentioned, Phoenix Police Department. And so we are very happy that that referral process is working well. So forty referrals from police specifically to Safe Outdoor Space. And so that's when they're interacting with someone and OHS or CBI is not present, and they're asking if they want to be transported over to the Safe Outdoor Space directly. And then same thing for the Phoenix Navigation Center. They're working with a person experiencing homelessness, asking them if they are interested in services at that site, and then transporting them directly. And they have a direct ability to get onsite and get a bed there.
Okay. And then my, my second to last question is regarding the tracking of available beds. I know that, I see you nodding your head. Would you like to just talk about that?
Sure. So in, Mayor, members of council, like in general, how we track available beds? So just to start off, there aren't really a whole lot of available beds. Just about every single one of our shelters is at capacity every night, including our Safe Outdoor Space. We're really dealing with just a handful of beds every night. And so our team has a communication effort between the sites that we control, which are the city-owned sites, Safe Outdoor Space, Phoenix Navigation Center, and the Washington Shelter, as well as the ones we fund in full, Rio Fresco and North Mountain Healing Center. And we, every day at the beginning of the day, we, we learn how many beds are available, whether they are specific to males or females, whether they are bottom bunks or top bunks. And then we distribute those appropriately, knowing that some of those sites, like the Safe Outdoor Space, Phoenix Navigation Center, and Washington, have a priority area first for those individuals that are experiencing homelessness in proximity to those sites. And then they're opened up more widely for other outreach teams.
Thank you. And on a positive note, I had the opportunity to do an outreach with OHS on Friday, and it was also a partnership with PD, was an individual that the police department had found a family that was experiencing homelessness. And I will And I will say that the feedback from the individual and his excitement to go to the Safe Outdoor Space, him saying that he didn't even know this place existed, was very encouraging for the, of the work that we do. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to everyone for your presentation. That is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank everybody for the work you've been doing and the, and the report today. I would like to go to Assistant Director Wolf regarding data and with our new, I'm not sure which one, is it P1 or RMS or both?
P1.
Okay. With that system, can you tell me how much of our data that we have now on the system we have been using has, will be able to be converted, converted to it in a way that we will be able to use it in our reports?
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor O'Brien, great question. We worked very closely with Motorola and our internal teams to be able to transfer all of the data from Hexagon into our new P1 system. In addition, we also migrated or in the, will end up migrating all of our PACE data, which was the system that we, that we used prior to Hexagon. So we're talking 20-plus years of, of information that will now exist within our new system. Once all of that data is in there, then we'll be able to still use that data. Here's the caveat associated with that, however, is still dependent on the quality of the data collection, the data capture, the policies and practices at the time when you cover that timeframe, and what questions were relevant or important at the time of those practices being conducted that then requires that information to be in those systems. So there'll be some limitations related to the data that, that's housed from those legacy systems within P1, but we'll still be able to, to analyze it, to examine it, do things like that with it. But there are going to be limitations to that data set.
So for example, you know, 10 years ago, we didn't necessarily have a field that said this is the kind of weapon that a suspect had. And, and that is a data point that I have asked and been adamant that we collect so that we can provide a, a full picture when we're looking at our data. If that was in the narrative 10 years ago or even five years ago, that is not necessarily going to go right into a field, correct?
That is correct.
So we would, if I wanted to know over the last 20 years, what kind of weapons suspects were using when they were having interactions with police, that would be a very laborious and manual effort to try to find out that information. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor O'Brien, yes, that is correct.
Okay. So when using some of, some of the data that we're asking for, really ground zero is when we went live, right? We won't, we won't necessarily be able to go back and get a picture of what last year was like or 10 or 20 years ago.
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor O'Brien, that is correct. There's always going to be limitations whenever you go back because we, if, we didn't know until today that we wanted to collect that information, that information may not be available nor is it in a form that's, that allows us to analyze it. With that said, we are observing that there are improvements in analytical tools, like AI tools, that into the future would allow us to, to do those narrative search in a more efficient and an effective manner. That's why I talked about developing methodologies to ensure that the analysis that we're conducting is accurate and validated. So there, there could be opportunities in the future to look at some of those limited, those limited data sets and still ask questions. But whenever we consume data, we have to understand that there, there's always going to be limitations with, with that data set based on, on how it was captured.
Previously, okay. Thank you very much for that, that clarification. And just as a point of reference, because as my colleague, Councilwoman Hodge Washington said, right, unless you've been living, eating and breathing this as, as many of you and us have been doing, some context is, is helpful. About how many calls does Phoenix Police Department answer on a daily basis or annually? Whichever number is easier, whoever can answer that.
Mayor, Gago, members of council, Vice Mayor O'Brien, it's about $2 million a year.
Okay. So we have about $2 million calls a year for our police department. And, and that, is that how many we actually go out on or that's how many we receive?
Those are how many we receive.
That's how many we receive. I can answer that, Vice Mayor. And we go out on about 600,000 calls.
Okay. All right. Thank you for those clarifications and those two numbers. I do want to very much thank all of you, but DC Ernst, we gave you a high bar in, in getting staffed and getting folks out there to help relieve some of the stress on our police department and our fire department. They were answering calls. They didn't necessarily have the tools to answer. So thank you for stepping up and filling those vacancies and getting folks trained and out on, on the streets to help our citizens. I am very impressed by how quickly you, you all did that. Thank you for that. And then again, just thank you all for all the work you do. I look forward to continuing to improve. I know that Chief Benza, you're working diligently to make sure that we have the right staff so that we are inspecting what we expect. And, and that is how we make sure that we're making improvements and making strides to provide our citizens with the best place to live, the safest place to live. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to circle back to the early intervention system because if memory serves me correctly, the city council approved funding for a similar system in 2019 at the Orpheum Theater. So what happened to that system? What did we, like, did we use it? Where, how was the money spent? Because I'm, I was a little surprised, I was a little surprised to see that as part of this measure.
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez, we've had some turnover with regard to those individuals that have been a part of that program. So what I'm going to share with you is the best of my understanding. The prior systems, when evaluated in a research environment to determine whether or not the recommendations being made by the system were, had efficacy associated with them, was found to be statistically limited. So that system evaluated in a research environment in coordination with our partners, our academic partners at Arizona State University, through also utilization of grant funding, found that that system didn't do as what we needed it to do or operate as expected. We want a system that the AI platform really allows us to be able to do, which is to, in a non-punitive format, understand what the employee is experiencing through their daily work life. So what kinds of calls are they going to? How many calls? Well, how many reports are they completing? As Chief Benza shared with you, how many hours are they working? Do we have any identified performance issues? Have we received any complaints with regard to that, that individual? And then through associated algorithms, be able to identify, is this an employee that, that requires an intervention before performance issues escalate or the employee engages? And nothing that any of us want, misconduct. So it allows us to be able to identify those individuals and then bring them to services to be able to assist them to be successful.
Okay. Thank you. So with this new system we're talking about, based on everything you said, the, has testing been done to make sure that we, it meets the academic, the academic rigor standards? Because I want to make sure that this system doesn't fail, right? Because these are funding, like, it's funding and resources, financial resources that are going into these. So can you speak to that?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Hernandez, yes, that was one of the reasons that we went to, through the procurement process, was to be able to identify a system that met our needs in that rigorous format, that it could also allow us with a data-driven perspective, be able to execute those activities that I previously described. Really, the goal is to be able to, in an objective format, be able to identify employees that need help and get them that, that help that they need.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Well, hearing none, we still have a lot of work to do, but we have a lot of accomplishments, a lot of trends going in the way we want and, and projects moving forward or hitting, go-live and completion. So thank you for this very important update. We're committed to keeping doing these updates and, and to continuous improvement, as Lori Bayes said. So with that, we are adjourned.
I hope you stopped by and got a book that provides information and beautiful imagery of all 18 pieces of art. Finally, let's give all of you, ourselves, a round of applause along this journey. Okay. This is the moment we've been waiting for, for nearly 15 years and certainly the last 45 minutes. Let's cut this ribbon and open this project.